The meeting will please come to order. Thank you, everyone, for joining us, everyone who is in council chambers and those of you who are watching virtually. Today is Thursday, October the 2nd. My name is Trippie Congo, President of Wilmington City Council. And again, on behalf of all of my colleagues, just want to say thank you for joining us. At this time, we will have our opening prayer by Mary Alina Rivera.
Heavenly Father, we have assembled to handle the affairs of our city. As we do so, we ask for your guidance and understanding. We pray that our city reaches a place of peace and safety. Keep us out of harm's way and bless those who are in authority. Let respect be key in all our endeavors. Padre Celestial, nos hemos reunido para manejar los asuntos de nuestra ciudad. Al hacerlo, le pedimos su orientación y comprensión. Oramos para que nuestra ciudad alcance un lugar de paz y seguridad, que nos mantenga fuera del peligro y bendecir a los que están en autoridad. Que el respeto sea clave en todos nuestros esfuerzos. Amen.
Amen.
And now, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilman Owens.
Present.
Councilwoman Darby.
Present.
Councilwoman Oliver.
Present.
Councilwoman Harley.
Present.
Councilwoman Willauer.
Present.
Councilwoman McCoy. Councilman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Field.
Present.
Councilwoman Bracy.
Present.
Councilwoman Cabrera.
Here.
Councilman Hackett. Councilman Spadola.
Present.
President Congo.
Here.
Eleven present and two absent.
Thank you. Just as a public note, for anyone who is with us virtually, there is a Google, Google Form signup link in the chat if you would like to give public comment. Anyone who is here with us in council chambers, if you haven't already signed up for public comment and you wish to give comment, you do still have time to, to sign up. There's a signing sheet right before the double doors, right before you, just before you. Now, we have the reading of the minutes of our previous meeting.
September 18th, 2025, City Council met in regular session with remote participation to who was referred, I mean, I'm sorry. City Council met in regular session with remote participation on the above date at 6:33 PM. President Pro Tem Yolanda M. McCoy presiding.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second for the minutes to be accepted as written on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carried. Our committee reports.
June 23rd, 2025, President and members of City Council. Ladies and gentlemen, we, Your Community Development and Urban Planning Committee, met by anchor location and remote participation to who was referred substitute one to ordinance number 25-018, entitled an ordinance to amend Chapter 34 of the City Code to allow residential tenants in city properties to deposit withheld rent in a city-held escrow account. Have given this ordinance careful review and recommend council vote on it at an upcoming council meeting. Respectfully submitted, those members of the Community Development and Urban Planning Committee. Those members present, Councilwoman Cabrera, Councilwoman Bracy, Councilman Field, Councilman Hackett, Councilwoman McCoy, Councilman Owens, President Congo, absent with leave, Councilwoman Willauer.
I move that the minutes be approved.
I move the committee report be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second that the report be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
June 25th, 2025, ladies and gentlemen, we, Your Health, Environmental, Aging, and Disabilities Committee, met by anchor location and remote participation to who was referred ordinance number 25-033, entitled an ordinance to amend Chapter 8 of the City Code to create an education workforce down payment and settlement assistance program. Have given this ordinance careful review and recommend council vote on it at an upcoming council meeting. Respectfully submitted, those members of the Health, Environmental, Aging, and Disabilities Committee. Those members present, Councilman Owens, Councilman Field, Councilman Hackett, President Congo, absent with leave, Councilwoman Willauer, and Councilwoman Cabrera.
I move the committee report be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, the report be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
September 11th, 2025, ladies and gentlemen, we, Your Community Development and Urban Planning Committee, met by anchor location and remote participation to who was referred ordinance number 25-044, entitled an ordinance to amend Chapter 34 of the City Code to require landlords provide written notice of tenants' rights and lease. Have given this ordinance careful review and recommend council vote on it at an upcoming council meeting. Respectfully submitted, those members of the Community Development and Urban Planning Committee. Those members present, Councilwoman Cabrera, Councilman Hackett, Councilwoman McCoy, Councilman Owens, Councilwoman Willauer, President Congo, absent with leave, Councilwoman Darby, and Councilman Field.
I move the committee report be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, the report be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
September 17th, 2025, ladies and gentlemen, we, Your Intergovernmental Committee, met by anchor location and remote participation to who was referred substitute number one to ordinance number 25-027, entitled an ordinance to amend Chapter 2 of the City Code to codify the ability to schedule a referendum to amend the city charter. Have given this ordinance careful review and recommend council vote on it at an upcoming council meeting. Respectfully submitted, those members of the Intergovernmental Committee. Those members present, Councilwoman Darby, Councilwoman Willauer, Councilwoman Oliver, absent with leave, Councilman Johnson, and President Congo.
I move the committee report be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, the report be received, recorded, and filed on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. This time, we will have our City Treasurers Report.
October 2nd, 2025, total investments $530,601,010.82. Cash, total cash on hand, $15,859,113.70. Grand total, $546,460,124.52. Submitted, City Treasurer, Dwayne Sims.
I make a motion that the treasurer report be received, recorded, and filed.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, the report be received, recorded, and filed. I'd like to recognize Councilwoman McCoy on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. I accept the motion to move to accept all non-legislative business.
No motion.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second to accept all non-legislative business. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried. We will move to resolution, resolutions for recognition. Councilmember Cabrera.
Thank you. I would like to invite Councilmember Christian Willauer to come forward and join me in recognizing Ana Maria Figueras. If Ana and her friends and family could come up to receive the recognition. While Ana is making her way forward, one of the things that I'd like to do during Hispanic Heritage Month is to recognize the unsung heroes in our community, the people who are behind the scenes getting things done. We know that the people in front of the scene are constantly being recognized and people see them out there, but there's those people behind the scenes that really help our community move forward. And Ana Figueras is one of those people. Where it is the sense of City Council to honor individuals and organizations who have demonstrated outstanding achievement and deserving of recognition and acknowledgement. Ana Figueras is one such individual. And whereas Ana is a native of Cuba, she served as faculty at the University of Santiago de Cuba for 18 years prior to immigrating to the United States. Although she faced numerous obstacles, she kept her passion for education, service, and community. Whereas Ana has supported the Latin American Community Center, the LACC, for the past 24 years. She has spearheaded and participated in a range of initiatives, including financial education for both youth and adults. Los Abuelos Program, supporting seniors, healthy families for medical screenings, and the Healthy Homes and Lead Program, promoting safe living environment. And whereas, over the years, Ana has taken on many responsibilities and embraced a variety of roles, all with one purpose, to uplift and make a lasting impact on the Wilmington community. Ana's commitment is a daily inspiration. And whereas...
Since 19, since 1968, National Hispanic Heritage Month has been celebrated annually to pay homage to Latinos who have shaped the United States and pay tribute to their ancestors who migrated from Mexico, Spain, the Caribbean, and South and Central America. Throughout the month, Hispanic Americans are celebrated for their great contribution to American life through cul, colorful culture, rich history, and diversity. Ana Figueras contributions to the Hispanic community of Wilmington in the form of resources, information, empowerment, and advocacy for healthier, stronger communities builds on this proud legacy. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Wilmington that this council is pleased to recognize Ana Figueras for her dedicated service to Wilmington's Hispanic community. Job well done.
Okay, good evening. I, I feel so happy that you invited me to that one, to give me recognition for my job. Believe me, I do from inside of my heart because I look like, I like to help the community in all the situations that they have. For that reason, I still working at the Latin America Community Center for 24 year, almost 25, and I, I think I will keep going helping my community because they are in need. Thank you, all of you, for inviting me, also for the recognition. It's no, it's not, I don't see like a personal recognition. I see that how do the people work with the families and all the residents for the Wilmington. Thank you so much.
At this time, I would like Jonathan Galindo to please come forward. My good friend Jonathan Galindo, I have known him for years and he has worn so many more hats than what this resolution mentions. He's been out here helping the community. I remember one of the things that he did when we had few spaces to go and gather, Jonathan became a promoter. He would have Latin dances at different restaurants, which really did help with the economic development. And we had a good time back in the days. It's been a while and everyone says they miss those days, but Jonathan has moved on to fry bigger fish and do more in the community. And he's going to tell you about specifically one of his programs. But I'm going to read your recognition because it is well deserved and we thank you for everything you've done behind the scenes. Where it is the sense of City Council to honor individuals and organizations who have demonstrated outstanding achievement and deserving of recognition and acknowledgement, Councilmember Maria Cabrera recognizes Jonathan Galindo as one such individual. And whereas Jonathan has demonstrated a commitment to empowerment and uplift throughout Wilmington's Hispanic community, in his professional role, he is a top-producing realtor. However, his impact and dedication extend beyond his work responsibilities. And whereas Jonathan's contributions in Delaware reflect his focus in building bridges, creating opportunities, and leaving a legacy of empowerment for future generations. As Marketing Director for the Philadelphia chapter of NAREP, the National Association of Hispanic Real Estate Professionals, Jonathan is instrumental in connecting Delaware to the national movement for Latino wealth building and home ownership. Whereas is the Vice President of Alianza Delaware, Jonathan has supported programs that provide education, empowerment, and resources for Latino families, including youth initiatives, cultural events, and advocacy efforts. He has also been a driving force in creating spaces for opportunity, such as the Business Center, TERA, which serves as a hub for Latino professionals and hosts resources like Dell One's Latino Mortgage Unit. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Wilmington that this council is pleased to recognize Jonathan Galindo for dedicating his time, creativity, and leadership to ensure that the voices of the Hispanic community are heard. Job well done.
Okay, good evening. Thank you for everyone. Thank you for the council member, Maria Cabrera, and to my friend, the president, Trippie Congo, which I know since high school years. And all these 20 years of our life in Delaware, we became a family. What I want to say is that I feel, when I came over 30 years ago, more Delawarean than the Latino now because I want to help my community to grow. So everything I do is a reflection of helping everybody to progress, to help each other, to help the neighbors, to help the, the areas they will live to improve everybody's life because everybody deserve a better way, a way of living. Everybody came to this place, to this planet, to do well. And I want to help my community. And everything I do through the nonprofit or everything I get involved representing the Latino community is always been my passion. I dedicate so many hours of my free time to help the community through these past 20 years from helping festival organizations, current parade festivals, and now as a real estate agent and helping families to accomplish the dream of being homeowners and stopping rent. So, thank you so much for, for this recognition. I really appreciate to be here. I can't believe I'm here standing up. I would never believe I was going to be here ever. So, thank you, guys, and... Thank you for everyone.
Councilwoman Darby.
Good evening. I have a resolution here in recognition of the Innocence Project of Delaware. You guys can come up as we read the resolution. So I'm going to read it, and then after that, you can introduce yourself and the work that you guys do for our city and state. Whereas, it is the sense of City Council to honor individuals and organizations who have demonstrated outstanding achievement and deserving of recognition and acknowledgement. Councilmember Shanay Darby recognizes the Innocence Project Delaware as one such organization. And whereas, International Wrongful Conviction, Conviction Day was established on October 2nd, 2013 by the Innocence Network to raise awareness of the causes and harms of wrongful convictions. The Wilmington City Council recognizes organizations like the Innocence Project Delaware that works to prevent, reveal, and correct wrongful convictions, free innocent individuals, and support them as they return home. And whereas, according to the National Registry, there are about 3,724 known innocent people since 1989 in the United States and five free individuals. Elmer Daniels, Jermaine Dollard, Isaiah McCoy, Mark Purnell, and Jermaine Marlowe Wright in the state of Delaware. And whereas, Innocence Project Delaware has received nearly 200 applications for post conviction, post conviction assistance since 2020. All of the free Delawareans identified as Black men. And 67% of Innocence Project Delaware applicants are Black people. Wrongful convictions are injustice that rob an innocent person of their life, liberty, and dignity and has an immeasurable personal, social, emotional, and societal cost. And whereas, cohorts, police, eyewitness misidentification, false convictions, confessions, inadequate legal defense, official misconduct, misapplication of forensic science, and unreliable and unregulated informant testimonies are all factors that lead to wrongful convictions. Access to post conviction DNA testing and the ability to run, return to court to prove one's innocence are critical mechanisms for uncovering wrongful convictions. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Wilmington that this council recognizes October 2nd, 2025 as International Wrongful Conviction Day. And we honor the important work of the Innocence Project Delaware. Job well done.
My name is Rebecca Scaglio. I'm the Board President of Innocence Project Delaware. I am here with Sophia Block and Herb Mondros, who also are just critical members of the IPD team. I'd like to, on behalf of the organization, I'd like to thank the council for recognizing Wrongful Conviction Day. Today's acknowledgement is more than symbolic. It is a statement that justice matters in Delaware. IPD is the state's only organization focused exclusively on addressing and preventing wrongful convictions. Each case we investigate represents a person waiting to be heard, a family holding on to hope, and a justice system that we are working with every day to transform. I don't have to tell you this, you probably already know this. Wrongful convictions devastate lives. Innocent people use, lose years, sometimes decades, behind bars for crimes that they did not commit. That's why we're working to pass two bills that would modernize Delaware's DNA testing laws and address the misapplication of forensic evidence, giving our state a fair path to correct wrongful convictions and bring our system in line with national... giving our state a fair path to correct wrongful convictions and bring our system in line with national standards. No one should remain imprisoned when evidence proves their innocence. This resolution shines a light on past harms and it points us towards solutions. On behalf of our clients, our exonerates and every innocent person still fighting for their freedom, I thank you for standing with us today.
I think this is yours.
Thank you very much.
The present.
Councilmember Owens.
Sorry about that. I just want to say thank you for all the hard work that y'all do in the community. I know y'all did a lot of work around the death penalty repeal as well too. So again, just thank you for all the work you're doing.
Thank you.
Councilmember Oliver.
Yes, I too would like to give congrats to all the work you've done throughout the state and throughout the city. Some of the names that you called off, I know about three of them. And kudos to y'all and I see y'all out here and I know the work y'all do. So congratulations, keep up the good work.
Councilmember Johnson.
Again, appreciate all your work, all the work you do with the law school. I think it's remiss, I would be remiss if I didn't mention you actually helped a part of a group effort with passing the wrongful conviction bill. And that was a huge milestone passed two sessions ago. And I know it's just active this year, July 1st. So again, I appreciate the work, not only in community but in Dover. And hopefully let us know on council how we can help make this change. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Harley.
Good evening, everyone. I am councilwoman Michelle Harley and I represent the 4th councilmatic district. At this time, I would like to invite all of our black entrepreneurs to come to the podium. All of our black entrepreneurs that are in the building that are participating in the Black Restaurant Week, I would like you to come at this time and anyone else that is here to support you. And while you're coming over here, I would just like to say that it is my honor and it is a pleasure on behalf, that's right, clap it up for them. A pleasure on behalf of our council president Trippi Congo, who spearheaded this in 2023, I believe, along with Wilmington City Council, that although the Black Restaurant Week launched, I believe, like in 2016, Wilmington City Council, as I said, along with our council president, we wanted to join the movement. We wanted to do our part to really recognize our black restaurant entrepreneurs here in the city of Wilmington and to do our part to make sure that you have the visibility, that you have the support and most of all, that you have the opportunity to attract new customers, residents from Wilmington and visitors as well. So it is our pleasure and it is an honor on behalf, again, as I said, President Congo and my city council colleagues to present this resolution to you on tonight. So October the 2nd, 2025, as I mentioned already, on behalf of our council president Trippi Congo and all of the Wilmington City Council members, whereas it is the sense of city council to honor individual organizations, even events and milestones that have demonstrated outstanding achievement and are deserving of recognition and acknowledgement. Wilmington Black Restaurant Week 2025 is such an occasion. Whereas Wilmington's 3rd Annual Black Restaurant Week will be held from September 28th to October the 5th, 2025, concluding with the Black Food Festival on this Sunday, October the 5th, a community celebration featuring food tastings, food trucks, a student cookoff competition and culinary conversations celebrating the rich culinary traditions of the African diaspora. Whereas Black Restaurant Week was founded nationally 2016 to highlight the flavors of African American and Caribbean cuisines while promoting and supporting black culinary professionals, businesses and workers. In 2023, the Wilmington City Council, in collaboration with the mayor's office of economic development and office of cultural arts affair, joined this movement by launching its own Black Restaurant Week to provide a platform for participating entrepreneurs to showcase their businesses, gain visibility and attract, as I mentioned, new customers. The benefits of this event last beyond the week. It strengthens relationships with local businesses and bolsters resilience in vulnerable communities. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Wilmington that this legislative body is pleased to recognize the participants, distinguished guests, planners and volunteers of Wilmington Black Restaurant Week 2025 for their roles in elevating the presence and representation of the African diaspora within the culinary industry. We also extend our appreciation for Flux Creative Consulting, Orplanes and Unified Creative Exchange for their collaboration on this event as well as Newcastle County Chamber of Commerce, the Delaware Restaurant Association and the Kenny Family Shoprite of Delaware for their sponsorship. And we want to say well done to each and every one of you because again, we know that this is not easy for you in terms of this industry. But Wilmington City Council is very proud of you and we are very proud to present this recognition to each and every one of you tonight. Job well done. So since we have a lot of business to take care of tonight, we do have a copy of this resolution for each and every one of you. I'm going to give it out and we do want each one of you to have the opportunity, if you would like to, to have a remark. But we're only going to give you one minute because we got official business to take care of tonight. Is that okay? All right, let's give them another hand.
Is there anyone that would like to give any brief comments or remarks? You can step up to the podium. Please remember to introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Nikita Thomas. I'm the owner of Rooted AF. It's a vegan restaurant located right down the street, 1313 North Market Street, inside of the Chancery. Thank you to, for all of this because I think when you're a restaurant owner or entrepreneur, entrepreneur period, we don't really have opportunities like these to kind of smell the roses. So this kind of forces us to be present in moments like these. So I really appreciate the city for acknowledging us. I didn't really get up here to say thank you. I just will never miss an opportunity to empower people to heal because that's the reason why I started Rooted. And I'll say this, the best way to start your morning is to drink 16 ounces of water. Your body is digesting in the morning, so it's going to aid your body in getting rid of the toxins. The next thing you can do is have a cup of tea. If you have hypertension, you can do things like hibiscus. If you deal with issues with pain, you can use things like turmeric. And overall, if you want to lose weight or live a healthier life, the best thing for you to do is eat real food. Meaning if it has ingredients, that means it did not come from the ground. If you eat on the outside of the grocery store versus the inside, you will live a much longer, happier and healthier life. And I truly believe that at the very least, we deserve to be happy. Thank you.
Hello, my name is April White. I am the owner of Holistic Alkali Brews, which is an organic herbal tea line. So it is not a restaurant, but I wanted to bring something new to the community. Our herbal teas are sold at the shoprites here through the Kenny family. So we're in three out of the six shoprites and we're able to bring organic herbal teas to the community. And it's a loose leaf organic herbal blend. So I definitely commend everything she just stated. And I am a chemist as well as a certified herbalist and a former pharmaceutical scientist. So just to mimic what she said, just teaching people how to heal with things from the earth. And I specifically focus on organic herbal teas. And I'm so excited to be a part of the community and just to be honored today. Thank you. Thank you to everyone.
Good evening, everyone. How y'all doing?
Good, how are you?
How y'all doing?
Hi.
All right. Let's turn up the energy a little bit. My name is Jason. I'm one of the owners of Green Box Kitchen. My business partner is sitting in the back. A lot of you know who Green Box Kitchen is and what we do, but I don't think many people understand why. 19 out of the 24 census tracts in Wilmington, Delaware has shown and proved that approximately 79% of Wilmington is categorized as the food desert. If you don't know what a food desert is, food desert means that you live more than a mile and a half away from direct access to fresh, healthy food. In 2016, we launched a nonprofit Wilmington Green Box, where our mission was very simple, to train, educate and employ adverse teens while bringing people that lived in food deserts in these surrounding neighborhoods and communities with direct access to healthy, fresh food. One thing came out of that mission. After three years of doing work on the ground, the people from these very communities that lived in food deserts said that we get it. Now how do we eat healthier and where do we go? In an effort to solve that problem, we created Green Box Kitchen. And as we approached six years of successfully being in business in less than 30 days, I can honestly tell you that to this very moment, our why is clear as it's ever been. And that is to make sure that the people that live in these surrounding neighborhoods and communities have somewhere they can go on a consistent and constant basis and get direct access to healthy, nutritious, real, 100% plant-based wholesome food. Thank you.
Thank you. And we really, really do enjoy these remarks, but we really need you to bring it to one minute. And we will be more than happy on Sunday when we come to the Queen to hear everybody's story because we definitely have a lot of official business to take care of. But we do want to hear from you, so we just want you to keep it to just like one minute, one or two minutes. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kia. I'm the owner of the Selfie Restaurant. I do not have those good foods. I got good comfort food, okay? And I am a nurse and I believe in eating in moderation, so that is healthy too. You don't have to do it all the time, but I agree with that. I will say, I will be a year in. I started this restaurant. It was very hard and Wilmington is very hard, I will say, but I made it a year next month, so I'm very happy. And I do like to get back to the community. I started this because I was homeless. I love to feed the homeless, the displaced. I plan on doing another Thanksgiving, have it at the Selfie Restaurant, open it for everybody that is displaced. So if you know anything, I would like to get engaged with more community things. So if y'all know anything, let me know, please. I would love to connect. And I'd just like to just say thank you for this opportunity. It means a lot to me, being new to the city. You guys are very different and I would say that, you know, but it's okay. I know how to work with everything and that's it. So come eat some good food.
Hi, my name is Sia Dempster-Willy. I'm an educator and a children's book author. My book Liberian Rice Bread is going, it's a story about my grandmother teaching me how to make bread. And I'm just thankful for the Wilmington City Council for allowing me this opportunity as a new author to celebrate our culture, our food. So thank you very much.
Well, I know I'm tired, so I'll keep it short. Hi, everybody. My name is Candice England and I here have with me my partner Keith Stewart and we are owners of Mind, Body and Soul Food. It is a vegan scratch based soul food kitchen and we specialize in using wholesome, all natural ingredients such as hearts of palm, jackfruit, banana blossom, things like that. The dream behind our vision was actually based upon me. I've been vegetarian for 15 years, vegan for about five years. It's been a life changer for me because for health reasons, I tipped the scale at 320 pounds. So I became a different person, just being, thank you. So just being more aware and more conscious of what I put in my body and using more natural ingredients, such as my peers and colleagues here that are already in their vegan businesses. So I inspired to be on their level too as well and be able to push out more healthy options to our community. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rhonda Conway and I'm here with my husband Calvin Conway. We opened our food truck in May of this year. So we are extremely excited for this opportunity. This is completely out of my element. This was my husband's dream. We started on a trailer with one grill and we got so busy that we ultimately had to get two grills. Then we got incredibly busy and required to get a third grill. And then God blessed us with an opportunity where someone had a customized truck built and they reneged on the deal. So someone told us about it and we had the opportunity to get it. So thank you very much for this opportunity and we look forward to working with the city of Wilmington.
At RCF, we give everybody a free sample your first time you come to us.
A free sample of our chicken.
Thank you.
Can I get my sample now?
Is the food truck outside?
We are Sunday. Everybody gets a free sample.
Good evening. My name is Levi Jordan. I'm from the Caribbean. You're going to hear my accent from Haiti. So I am the owner of Testicle Haitian Cuisine in Wilmington. It's a pleasure and honor for me to be here tonight. I'm just happy to be here just to say thank you to the council. Thank you to everyone, especially the employee that come to support me. Our food is healthy. It's like you have a mama food every day. So come and try it. See you on Sunday. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. My name is Jeremy McDonald. I'm from Jamaica. I don't want to speak Jamaican because you may not understand, but I located on 2916 North Market Street. It's called Rum Punch Restaurant. Anywhere you look us up, you can find us right now. So please visit at 2916 North Market. All of our seasoning come from home. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joaquin Wilburn. I'm the owner of Keem's Cuisine Soul Food at the Riverfront. I just want to say it's been a blessing to operate in the city of Wilmington. I'm officially, I'm originally a Philadelphia native. I moved to Wilmington in 2007, which I own and operated Metro PCS stores by T-Mobile, which I had a good relationship. I actually own the store right there on Market Street and a few other stores throughout the state. But I really just want to say, and I've expanded, you know, my business, opportunities, career, et cetera, through the state, the city of Wilmington, state of Delaware. And it's just been, it's been really, it's been really nice. The city is very supportive. The state is very supportive. I gained some comfort through my lounge, delving into the restaurant business, having a small kitchen. And that's what kind of gave me the push and confidence to open a restaurant. And although it's very challenging right now with the economy, we do get a lot of support from the city. You know, we're still having some success. So I just want to say thank you to the city. This is, this is very nice as well. Trippi, thank you too. You're one of my customers from town to town. So I appreciate you all. Thank you.
At this time, we're going to have some remarks from the different council members real quick. Council president, council member Owens.
Thank you. First off, I just want to say congratulations to all the hard work that y'all put in. And I'm glad that we as a city can celebrate the culture, the us coming together as a people. Again, our community is sometime under attack. Sometimes we feel left out. So this is our way as a city to say, we have your back. I've either stepped out my shell, I've tried. This is heartwarming to see y'all here and where our money speaks, you know, put your money where your buck is, right? So I've been to a lot of your restaurants. That's like a cousin of mine over at Soul Food on Market Street. We just ordered food from you for the Monday Club. I'm constantly at Box, I'm constantly down at Riverfront. So I'm just proud of all y'all, and I do not come to you vegan. So kudos to all y'all. I mean, y'all should be proud of yourselves.
Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Willair?
Yes, I just wanted to say congratulations to you all. It's a challenging business, and I appreciate the love that you bring to bringing great food to Wilmington. Also, I really want to thank Ms. Jordan at the Tasty Creole for bringing Haitian food to the 5th District and just your persistence and your, you know, commitment to making sure that you're bringing your great food to the city of Wilmington. So thank you all.
Thank you. All right. So the council members, last but not least, President Congo?
Oh, yes. Thank you. I know this is just a very, very proud moment for me as a, as a council president, as a council member, just as a Wilmingtonan, just to be able to be a part of this celebration of, of black greatness. You know, it's an idea that I did think of a couple of years ago, but I did not do it by myself. So I have to thank all of my colleagues, everyone in the administration of, for Mayor Carney and also for Mayor Prizicki's administration who helped put on Black Restaurant Week. So I just want to thank all of you. Thank you for everything that you have done for the community. Thank you for enduring. I know times have been really, really tough, but just thanks for sticking in there. Like Councilmember Johnson said, just let us know if we can help in any way financially. I know I'm really looking forward to Sunday. I know it's gonna be a lot of fun. You see, we all have our Wilmington Black Restaurant Week shirts on, so we're gonna ask, we're gonna take a picture with all of you before you leave. But again, just congratulations, thank you again, and I'm already looking forward to how we can even do it bigger and better next year. And if you have any suggestions, just please let us know how we can just help you with the, with the week, next week, I mean, next year also.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so at this time, we're gonna ask everyone to get line up upfront, and then we're gonna ask the council members to come as well, so we can take a quick picture.
Okay. All right.
I will look out for you. I would like for all the restaurant owners in the 4th District to just raise your hand if you're a restaurant owner in the 4th District, Riverfront, Market Street, Chancery. Okay, I just wanted to, all right, just acknowledge you. Y'all showed up and showed out.
Yeah, I was. I was about to say.
Okay, let's see. We gotta get someone.
Council President?
I can sit in.
Okay. Ready? Okay, here we go. Ready, everyone? Three, two, one. Okay, thank you.
Good job. Good job. Good job. Okay. At this time, I have another recognition. I would like to ask Ms. Lacey to please come at this time along with anyone else that is here to support her. So as she's coming to the podium, I just want to say that I believe we met maybe like in 2016 when the city of Wilmington received ARPA funds. I have two communities that I believe that when you need more, you should get more. So I had the opportunity to work with the Neighborhood House, making sure during that time, they got between $10,000 to $15,000 to help the different families, children and families there that had many, many needs. Ms. Lacey is the Director of the Family Services and Homelessness Prevention at the Neighborhood House. She has a wonderful Executive Director, Ms. Allison Window. She's not being recognized, but I want to recognize her. Put your hand up, Allison, who is doing a par excellent job at the Neighborhood House. And so I saw on social media where Ms. Lacey put in 32 devoted years of service at the Neighborhood House. And I just believe anybody that puts in that many years of dedicated service that, that's right, you can clap it up. You can clap it up. That puts in that many years of dedicated service, they deserve recognition. So I'm happy to be here tonight to present this recognition to Ms. Lacey, October the 2nd, 2025. Sponsored Councilmember Michelle Harley. Whereas it is the sense of City Council to honor individuals and organizations who have demonstrated outstanding achievement and deserving of recognition and acknowledgement, Councilmember Michelle Harley recognizes Kelly Lacey, Director of Family Services and Homelessness Prevention and Neighborhood House, Inc. as one such individual. On July 26, 26, 2025, Kelly marked 32 years of devoted service at Neighborhood House, Inc. What began as a one-year commitment to work as a receptionist became a lifetime vocation. In her current role, she has supported numerous individuals and families as they work to maintain financial independence and long-term stability. Whereas the Neighborhood House, Inc. was founded in 1927 to offer transformational programs that positively impact low-to-moderate-income individuals, families, and communities. Family Services and Homelessness Prevention are critical lifelines for those experiencing financial hardship and housing instability. In 2023 alone, these services positively impacted the lives of over 2,000 people. In Wilmington, 590 clients received food and an additional 520 were given food and other resources during the holiday season. Thank you. Outside of her professional role, Kelly enjoys spending time with her daughter and being a proud G mom. So to her three, I feel that, to her three grandsons, some of her favorite pastimes are laughing, singing, and dancing with those who know her best. Now therefore, be resolved by the Council of the City of Wilmington that this council is pleased to recognize Kelly Lacey for her dedication and services to the residents of the city of Wilmington. And again, Ms. Lacey, I want to say thank you very much every time I call and we speak. You know, you're very friendly, very calm, very professional, and I really feel as though that they have a gem in you at the Neighborhood House. Thank you. Thank you, Allison, for recognizing her being a valuable employee. And again, congratulations and job well done. Okay. I'll give you your recognition. Okay. I've got a lot here. We got a lot here. Alrighty. All right, congratulations to you.
Thank you. So happy to be here. Thank you. Again, my name is Kelly Lacey. To God be the glory. Yes, one year, I asked the Lord to bless me with a job because I was unemployed, and I asked him, I said, whoever hires me, I will be faithful and dedicated for one year, and then I will continue my search. Well, it's been 32. Thank you.
Councilmember Oliver?
Yes, I'd like to say congratulations to Ms. Kelly. She helped raise me. Her husband and my brother were best of friends, but Michelle didn't exaggerate. If you need any help, you call Ms. Lacey. She has helped out a lot of people that I know have called her on so many occasions, and she always says, don't hesitate. So she helps everybody throughout the city, and she will call you and say, oh, you know, we got some funding coming. So Kelly, you know, kudos to you. A lot of people get these jobs and you don't know why they get them, but this is, times like this, we need people like you, so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Ms. Lacey, I want to say that your name has come across many lips when people tell me the help that they have received and also referring people to you. So I just want to personally say thank you for all those that you have helped. A lot of times, we don't realize the impact of one thing that's been done through the years and someone retells the story. So you definitely have been out there a long time, and we really love you and appreciate you and keep up the good work. Thank you for helping us.
Go get your picture taken. That's it? Go get your picture taken. President Congo, to expedite time, is it okay if we take a picture right here?
Sure.
Okay. All right, we're gonna line up right here to take a quick picture so I can get back in my seat. She's in the hallway.
All right, ready? Here we go. Three, two, one. Gentlemen in the head. Three, two, one. Perfect. Thank you.
Congratulations. In the way of other recognitions from all of council, we would like to recognize the fifth and final salute to the legendary Riverside Mothers. And I would like to recognize the 14th Pan-African Global Trade and Investment Conference. Also, in the way of sympathy resolutions from all of council, sympathy resolution for Robin Untank and Derwin Coleman from Councilwoman Cabrera, a sympathy resolution for Anna Maria Hernandez from Councilmember Oliver, sympathy resolutions for Abby Egosah, Charles Ellis Harris, Evangelist Adrian Charlene Medford, and Charles Bryant Senior, and from Councilmember Owens, sympathy resolutions for Theodore Samuel Brown and Marjorie Teresa Purvey. At this time, we are going to begin public comment, but since it is already 7:30, we do need to take a vote to extend public comment past 7:30.
Motion to extend.
Second. It's been publicly moved and second to extend public comment. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. First, we have Deacon Earl Tate. We do have a few members who are with us virtually who want to give public comments, so we're going to switch back and forth between those who are in council chambers and those who are virtual. Thank you for joining us, and please remember to introduce yourself. You have three minutes.
Greetings. My name is Deacon Earl E. Tate, who's never late because he don't want to lose his pair of roller skates. And, and I'm here, and I'm here to, the first, the first comment is, is about, is about the streets, the streets that have been, that have been paved and everything is good, but, but down on 26th and Jessup, that, 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 there's a hole, there's a hole that is coming back, coming back in there, coming back in there. And, and when the cars come down 20, 26th Street, you could hear them, you could hear them as they pass by, as they pass by the street. So, so like, so like, we would like to get that hole, get that hole patched up, not patched up, but fixed up, fixed up so there would be no more holes in, in the streets. Plus, also on, on 20th, 25th and Jessup, where there was an accident and everything, somebody got killed, but, 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 but they left, they left a whole lot of bottles out there, out there, and we would, we would like to have them moved because, because the little kids, the little kids, they come out there, the players there, might, might, might get in the habit of picking them up, picking them up, picking them up, and hold them up to their mouth like, like they're drinking. So, so, so they've been there long enough, they've been there long enough, we would like to have it cleaned up, cleaned up, and cleaned up now. Plus, also, also, in, in, in response to the seniors, to the seniors that, that, that live, that live on low income, that, that own the house and everything, we all received the letter, received the letter about, about the holes, I mean, I mean about the, the water pipes, the water pipes and, and the sewer pipes and everything, and about, and about they need fixing, but, but how can you expect us on low income to, to do it, to do it when, when, when they was out here, when they was out here fixing, fixing on, 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 on the lines and everything? We, we thought that they had it fixed, fixed by then, but, but now, but now we find out that, that they want, that they want us to fix it. No, we can't.
You have 30 seconds.
So, so, so we need, so, so we need help, help in getting it fixed. But, but that, those are the three things that I like to, that I like to speak on and I like to have y'all, have y'all to, to address. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, virtually, we have Nicole Mihja. WITN is Nicole Mihja, still with us? Nicole Mihja, if you can hear me, please unmute your microphone.
Yes, I can hear you.
All right. Thank you for joining us. Please introduce yourself. If you'd like to say that, which district you live in, if you live in a city, you may, but you don't have to. You have three minutes, and once you have 30 seconds left, I'll give you a friendly reminder to, to wind down your comments. Thank you. You still there? Okay, we're gonna go to Ann Aviles. Ann Aviles?
Hello?
Yes, thank you for joining us. Please remember to introduce yourself. You have three minutes. If you like, you may list, you may say what district you live in. You don't have to. Once you have 30 seconds left, I'll give you a friendly reminder.
Okay, thank you so much. My name is Ann Aviles, and I live in the 8th District, and I wanted to...
Thank you for joining us and please remember to introduce yourself. You have three minutes.
Greetings. My name is Deacon Earl E. Tate, who's never late because he don't want to lose his pair of roller skates. And I'm here, and I'm here to, the first, the first comment is about, is about the streets, the streets that have been, that have been paved and everything is good, but, but down on Twenty-Sixth and Jessup, that, 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 there's a hole, there's a hole that is coming back, coming back in there, coming back in there. And, and, and when the cars come down Twenty, Twenty-Sixth Street, you could hear them, you could hear them as they pass by, as they pass by the street. So, so like, so like, we would like to get that hole, get that hole patched up, not, not patched up, but fixed up, fixed up so, so there would be no more holes in, in the streets. Plus, also on, on Twenty-Fifth and Jessup, where there was an accident at and everything, somebody got killed, but, 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 but they left, they left a whole lot of bottles out there, out there, and we would, we would like to have them moved because, because the little kids, the little kids, they come out there, they play out there, might, might, might get in the habit of picking them up, picking them up, picking them up, and hold them up to their mouth like, like they're drinking. So, so, so they've been there long enough, they've been there long enough, we would like to have it cleaned up, cleaned up, and cleaned up now. Plus, also, also, in, in, in response to the seniors, to the seniors that, 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 that live, that live on low income, that, that own the house and everything, we all received a letter, received a letter about, about the holes, I mean, I mean about the, the water pipes, the water pipes and, and the sewer pipes and everything, and about, and about they need fixing, but, but how can you expect us on low income to, to do it, to do it when, when, when they was out here, when they was out here fixing, fixing on, 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 on the lines and everything? We, we thought that they had it fixed, fixed by then, but, but now, but now we find out that, that they want, that they want us to fix it. No, we can't.
You have thirty seconds.
So, so, so we need, so, so we need help, help in getting it fixed. But, but that, those are the three things that I'd like to, that I'd like to speak on and I'd like to have y'all, have y'all to, to address. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, virtually, we have Nicole Mihia. WITN is Nicole Mihia, still with us? Nicole Mihia, if you can hear me, please unmute your microphone.
Yes, I can hear you.
Alright, thank you for joining us. Please introduce yourself. If you'd like to say that, which district you live in, if you live in a city, you may, but you don't have to. You have three minutes and once you have thirty seconds left, I'll give you a friendly reminder to, to wind down your comments. Thank you. You still there? Okay, we're going to go to Ann Aviles. Ann Aviles?
Hello?
Yes, thank you for joining us. Please remember to introduce yourself. You have three minutes. If you'd like, you may list, you may say what district you live in. You don't have to. Once you have thirty seconds left, I'll give you a friendly reminder.
Okay, thank you so much. My name is Ann Aviles and I live in the Eighth District. And I wanted to express my support for the Bill Two-Five-Zero-Two-Seven that seeks to strengthen transparency on community-driven referendums. I know that it's very important for democracy, especially given what is happening at the federal level. It's very important that residents of municipalities and cities have the opportunity to raise issues and concerns to them, their families, for their well-being, and that the community can have a voice in identifying problems and solutions. So I just want to express my support. I hope that council will support this bill. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Next, in council chambers, we have Lourdes Rivera. Thank you for joining us. And once you have about thirty seconds left, I'll give you a friendly reminder.
Good evening. My name is Lourdes Rivera. I live in the Fifth District for the last thirty-five years. I'm more, I live, I'm a vice president of the Fifth District Neighborhood Planning Council and I support ordinance Twenty-Five-Zero-Two-Seven from Councilmember Shanae Darby. This ordinance is important because it gives people in Wilmington a way to make changes to the city charter. Not only city council, where these residents can collect signatures, choose a citizen charter commission and have public meeting so everyone can understand and give their ideas. As a community leader, I know many neighborhoods, their voices are not heard. This ordinance will help people take part in a big decisions that affect housing, family, and our neighborhood. I ask you to pass ordinance Twenty-Five-Zero-Two-Seven so that the people of Wilmington have a real voice in the future. I also support ordinance Twenty-Five-Zero-One-A from Councilmember McCoy to amend Chapter Thirty-Five of the City Code to allow residential tenants in city property to deposit with rent in a city escrow account. Thank you and have a good afternoon.
Thank you. Next, virtually, we're going to go back to see if Nicole Mihia, if she was able to get back online?
Yeah, sorry about that. Hi, my name's Mihia. I live in, oh, sorry, is it okay to start?
No, yes, go ahead, thank you.
Okay, thank you. My name is Nicole Mihia. I live in Wilmington, Delaware, and I also want to show support for ordinance Twenty-Five-Zero-Two-Seven introduced by City Councilmember Shanae Darby. And the reason I express support for this is because we need to have an opportunity for people to initiate changes, not just a council. And especially as we continue to see the state, the national context continue to ignore our interest or even push them down, I think that having this recognition and this possibility at the city council level is super important for people to continue to be heard and the changes that we need. So please vote in support of ordinance Twenty-Five-Zero-Two-Seven and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Brandon Fletcher.
Good evening, Council President. I'm here to speak in strong support of-
Please introduce yourself.
Brandon Fletcher. I'm here to speak in strong support of ordinance Twenty-Five-Zero-One-A to create stronger protections for tenants in landlord-tenant disputes. This is not just a technical fix, it's a vital step towards housing justice in our city. Too often renters live under the threat of neglectful landlords, unsafe housing conditions, or sudden evictions with very few remedies. And so by allowing rent to be placed in an escrow under certain conditions, this ordinance ensures that landlords can't collect rent while failing to uphold the basic obligations of habitability. It balances rights, ensuring that landlords are held accountable while giving tenants a lawful, structured recourse. I also want to talk in support of Twenty-Five-O-Seven because I think that the city should take every opportunity to try to strengthen its code, to strengthen democracy. Municipalities have a chance and the responsibility to update and enhance the processes so that people have real power to make decisions. That's how we prevent the dangerous backsliding into authoritarianism that we're seeing across this country, and I think that it's a good step forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Virtually, we have Mighty Soul. No, okay, she dropped off. And our last person for public comment is Cheyenne Miller. Thank you for joining us and please remember to introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Cheyenne Miller. I live in the Seventh District and I also wanted to come up and give support for the escrow bill. Thank you so much, council member, for all the work that you put in. I know you put a lot of years into getting this bill passed. It's going to really help the city to have an escrow account. I also think it signals to the state that the state needs to step up and change the state's withholding laws. Right now, people can only withhold a small portion of their rent and being able to withhold your entire rent is necessary for you to be able to hold your landlord accountable to get things done. And so I think this signals to the state that we need to be changing the escrow laws. The other thing I think is amazing is that we have a bill to change the referendum process. And by changing it, it's just mostly clarifying it. The city has a amazing thing that most cities don't always have, and it's very rare to see this in Delaware, and it's a process for the people to be able to come out and take a vote on an issue that they care about. That's like true direct democracy and we don't get to see it as often. Other states do have it, other cities have it. This was used in the nineties when they made decisions around the residency law. And I think it would be amazing to make sure that that law is clarified and made clear and understandable for people so that they can participate and be able to do a referendum if that's what's necessary. And so I also want to say thank you for putting that bill up and I hope you all will pass both of these bills today. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we will move to legislative business. Councilmember Cabrera?
Mr. President, I move council dissolve into a committee of the whole for the purpose of holding a public hearing.
Second? It's been moved in second that council dissolve into a committee of the whole for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Clerk, please read the affidavit of publication.
Affidavit of publication, State of Delaware County of Newcastle, The Wilmington News-Journal is a daily newspaper of general circulation printed and published in the state of Delaware, that the publication, a copy of which is attached hereto, was published in the said newspaper and the issued dates September sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five, sworn and, sworn to and subscribed before on nine sixteen, twenty-twenty-five. Signed, Notary State of Wisconsin. Vicki Feldman.
I move the affidavit of publication be made part of the record.
Second? It's been moved in second that the affidavit of publication be made a part of the record on the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Clerk, please read the planning commission report.
July sixteenth, twenty-twenty-five. The Honorable Kira R. Granado. Ms. Granado, dear Ms. Granado, attached this to city councils, for city councils' consideration, our city planning commission resolution six twenty-five, proposed amendments to Chapter Forty-Eight of the City Code to expand the types of uses permitted as a matter of right within the M-one light manufacturing zoning district to include commercial recreation.
I move the planning commission report be made part of the record.
Second? It's been moved in second that the planning commission report be made a part of the record on the question. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We're going to ask, excuse me, the representative from the planning department to please come forward with their report. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening, Council President. Councilmembers, members of the public. My name is Abdur Rashid Dawudu. I'm a planner too in the Department of Land use and Planning. Thank you for the opportunity to present, to present ordinance Two-Five-Zero-Four-Eight at its third and final reading. The purpose of this ordinance is to amend Chapter Forty-Eight of the City Code to define and permit commercial recreation and public assembly as matter of right users in the M-one district, and that is the light manufacturing zoning district. Currently, the city's zoning code prohibits this uses in the M-one district. That means developers seeking to open a community center, event space, or recreational facility must first go through the complex zoning board of adjustment approval hearing process for a used variance. However, the Department of Land Use and Planning has seen a clear shift in users in the M-one district and also an opportunity to align the city's zoning code with current development trends. Ordinance Two-Five-Zero-Four-Eight modernizes the code by removing unnecessary regulatory hurdles and aligning the M-one zoning districts with actual development trends. A good example of this trend is the Chase Field House, which was approved as a public assembly and commercial recreation use through the ZBA, through the ZBA variance in two thousand and nineteen. Between two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-four, the Chase Field House has generated over two-point-five, two-point-four million visits and has created approximately forty-three full-time and forty-five part-time jobs and will generate around one-ninety-five-thousand yearly in post-abatement property taxes. This facility proves that such uses can thrive in the M-one district. The key provisions of ordinance Two-Five-Zero-Four-Eight as follows. First, the ordinance adds clear definitions to the zoning code. Public assembly is defined here as indoor or outdoor facilities where people gather for civic, educational, religious, social, or cultural purposes such as community centers, event venues, stadiums, or places of worship. Commercial recreation is defined as facilities providing recreational or entertainment activities to the public such as fitness centers, skating rinks, bowling alleys, arcades, and climbing gyms. Second, the ordinance adds this uses to Section Forty-Eight, Two-Four-Six of the zoning code as matter of right users within the M-one district. Thirdly, it applies existing parking standards requiring one space for every three-thousand square feet of gross floor area, which is the same standard for warehousing and industrial users. The advantages of this ordinance, the, the advantages include several significant benefits for the city of Wilmington. First, it drives revitalization of underutilized parcels, especially in South Wilmington, where M-one parcels sometimes sit vacant. This ordinance allows them to be activated for community-serving purposes. Second, it directly supports economic development and jobs. This uses generates activities that support local businesses, attract regional visitors, and create employment in recreation, hospitality, and entertainment sectors. Thirdly, it ensures consistency with best planning practices. Other U.S. cities, other U.S. cities, including Los Angeles, Philadelphia, already permit similar uses in industrial zones. This updates, this update ensures Wilmington stays competitive. Finally, we project no negative fiscal impact on the city. The ordinance is not expected to impose any cost on the city. Finally, the city council's findings, which also reflect the city planning commission's recommendations, confirm that there has been no opposition to these proposed amendments, that the ordinance complies with Delaware law and applicable planning standards, and that it directly supports the city's broader development goals. In conclusion, ordinance Two-Five-Zero-Four-Eight provides a clear, practical, and future-focused update to our zoning code. The rationale is strong, the provisions are straightforward, and the advantages include revitalization, job recre, job creation, and alignment with best planning practices. I respectfully urge council's approval of ordinance Two-Five-Zero-Four-Eight. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any council members have any questions? Councilmember Oliver?
Can I make a statement?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that presentation. I would like to apologize, not really apologize, in the committee, I was confused with this whole M-three. I was thinking of another area because I kept seeing by, by the park, I mean by, looking at parks and recreation, and somehow you kept saying, yeah, that's why I kept saying. So I just wanted to put some clarity to this. And somehow you were saying, yeah, and I'm like, well, three, one by parks and recreation, I guess some wood area because I'm very familiar with, South Bridge area. So long story short, now I have some clarity. This is, this is a matter of right. This is over by the field house in conjunction with the Seventy-Sixers. And I kept asking, or I did ask several of us, Six, what is going to be there? And it was told nothing, but this is going to be recreational, indoor track, movie, things of that nature. So I know this may be your first or whatever, hearing, but in the future, at a committee meeting, when we ask what it is, because we were, I know I was talking about not voting for it because it didn't make sense, but after I did some research, now it makes sense. So congratulations. I will be supporting it, but I was confused, just to let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Owens?
Yeah. So I am a little confused here because in that committee meeting, it was stated that there was nothing that was triggering this legislation. It was stated multiple times. And M-one isn't, you're not just changing it in one neighborhood, it wouldn't just be over in the South Bridge area, it would be M-one throughout our zoning map, correct?
Exactly.
I do have M-one in my district in two areas that I know that my civic associations would want to continue to have input if something like this was coming into their neighborhood. And from my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, when someone goes for a variance, they have to reach out to the council member, they have to reach out to the community and get that public input as well too, and at least some buy-in? So this piece of legislation looks to bypass all that, correct?
Yes, this legislation would make it a matter of right. That means there won't be need for ZBA hearing process for it to be approved.
Have, in the past, have you seen a difficulty with requiring developers having to work with the residents who actually live here to see if they truly want something in their neighborhood like this?
Actually, as it stands now, for every development that's coming to the city, we always encourage developers to meet with the neighbors, with the neighbors, and, and oftentimes, they meet with the neighbors. And, and part of the, should I say, regulatory activities we've put forward is to have pre-development meetings with these developers. So if the product, if the projects they're proposing is not viable to the community or it's going to harm the community in any way, we, the planners, would believe, we use our professional ethics on, on the job to, to stop this kind of project. And we also encourage developers to also reach out to their accounts, to the districts, to the council members in the districts of where they are proposing such developments. So it's not like they'll just have free hand to do whatever they like. Those processes are still there and they're still intact.
But, so if they're, if you're encouraging these meetings already, why would we need to take away the actual enforcement for when they want to change a- why would we need to take away the actual enforcement for when they want to change a zoning, right? So this is saying, it's suggested, but it's not required for them to meet with the community. Whereas if we leave it the way it is, we still ensure that the community gets an opportunity to have their voices heard and get a public hearing to come out and speak out on this. I know that development is key and critical to the life and the growth of the city. But we also have to remember who put us at knee seats, which are the residents, and they deserve a voice as well too.
That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Harley, did you grab your hand up? Are you okay?
I'll wait.
Darby?
Yes, I had just a few questions. So to provide safeguards for the community, would you guys, or could we have conversation about like requiring developers to have community, like to do community benefits agreements, talk about affordability standards, public input channels, as our council member Owens was talking about, anti-displacement policies, and equity audit? Because my concern is, it's like, what the ordinance says, I think on paper sounds great, right? Revitalizing underused areas, widen the city's mixed use, we'll attract new businesses, increase public amenities, which sounds great on paper. But when we look at the pattern and history of development in the city of Wilmington, we know that a lot of communities have been excluded from that and don't feel included in the development that has happened in our city. So for me, I will, I will feel more comfortable if we're looking at and understanding the context of like what's happening here, the equity piece to it, for me to feel even comfortable in supporting this, because what I see is that a lot of times, and especially people, black and brown communities, low-income communities, you go into these industrial, you change the zoning, and then the community changes, rent rises, right? Because they like, oh gosh, we're about to get high-end restaurants now, right? So the community starts changing, you see those things, and I saw that has happened in the city of Wilmington. So that's what I'm concerned about with this piece of legislation. So I would love to see those things, community benefits agreements, equity impact, a track on how it's impacting the community, and if the community is being changed. Those are the things that I would like to see. I think by, getting, taking away the, like, listen, a matter of like use, like it's just going to be by default, and they're able to have this mixed use. I think it's going to cause a lot of problem with development and the way our community looks in the, in the future, so.
If I may just, yes, yeah, thank you for the comment. But again, I must point out that M one district is not residential. So as, is not residential district, you know, it's manufacturing district. So I, I don't see, I don't think it's going to affect displacement in, in any way. Rather, it would create opportunities for more housing. Because once this business starts to thrive in M one district, it would make developers to want to build housing in residential neighborhoods.
Can I follow up with a question?
Yes.
Aren't M one districts near a lot of residential communities?
So M one districts have barriers already, you know, so, and this kind of uses cannot, they're already like limited places for where we can have this kind of large-scale development, you know, and mostly it's going to be in South Wilmington.
Yeah, so there are residential neighborhoods next to M one districts, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, so, so I know what M one means and what it is, so I wasn't saying that it's residential. What I'm saying is that when you have residential communities surrounded by M one historically, and communities that are black and brown and low-income, you start seeing displacement. Because now you have landlords and developers who see this community is about to come up, right? We're about to have high-end restaurants, we're about to have high-end apartments that people can't afford, right? So then now the community starts looking different in the surrounding neighborhood. I'm not talking about within the M one, I'm talking about, we live near M one. I can think of so many communities that are by, in this, by M one manufacturing throughout the city, especially in the South Bridge neighborhood, which I fear that it's not going to be the South Bridge I know growing up and the South Bridge I know today because of the development that's going to happen in the next ten years. It's not, people are not going to live there, it's not going to be the same South Bridge. And I've seen that happen throughout the city because of the type of development and the patterns and the type of development we do here in the city. So I'm not saying M one is residential. What I'm saying is M one is next to residential. And when you look at the data and research, when it's near black and brown and low-income neighborhoods, it changes and it displaces people.
Thank you. Councilmember Harley, then Councilmember Johnson, and Councilmember Spadola.
Well, thank you, Council President. So first of all, to my understanding, any type of zoning areas, if a homeowner or business owner seeks to want to change it, they can go before the zoning board. So if this changes from what it is to residential or the light manufacturing, it's, it's not in stone that if another, like I said, business, or if there is another type of entity that needs a different type of zoning, that's what the zoning board is there for, to my understanding. So none of these zoning districts are what you would consider in stone if someone applies. I mean, every week, every month, the zoning board meets to listen to those in the community that if they want to do some type of, whatever it is, not just development, open up a business, whatever it is, they apply to the zoning board. So I just wanted to make it clear that this is not, doesn't mean that it's in stone. And if you wanted to do something differently there, that you cannot do it, to my understanding. And, you know, you can speak to that if you want. Not only that, but for those communities, when there are these types of requests to come in the community, there's notifications that go out to the community for them to weigh in. And I do think that we ought to allow those that live in those communities that are near these areas to speak for their, their community. And as of today, there has not been any opposition to my understanding as it relates to those areas in the manufacturing areas that are around the waterfront areas. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
I appreciate the planning commission work, and I took a deep dive into the zoning code. And I've always been an advocate of we need to perform our whole zoning code. As I've made many changes to the zoning code since I've been in office. And I think we can hit a right tone, but I do have concern because it's not just waterfront. It's the seventh district tremendously. If you know, I have manufacturing right in my district. And it affects, I was in a civic meeting last night about the methadone clinic. And that's one of the biggest things, I have the biggest methadone clinic in, like, the county, in my district, okay? And people ask, well, how was that allowed to be there? And I say, well, I don't know, I wasn't in council then, and so it was allowed. And so that's a problem. So I, I think it's the public assembly definition, honestly, as a wordsmith, that gets me. I get the commercial with the sports and fitness, those things. But then you add the public assembly with cultural purposes, social services, community centers. That could be a clinic, right? That could be some other type of entity there. So that's, I think it should be a more narrow definition. I like the commercial recreation. I think we should encourage health in our community. But the public assembly, I think the wording is a little bit too broad, frankly. And so that's my, I know we each have different takes on it. That's my concern is that assembly hall, community center, conference and event, social services. Like what's social services, right? Is that a clinic? Is that a, is that a halfway house? Like, you know, that's something we fight. So I'm not going to say never. What I'm going to say is I don't think this language quite gets it. So I don't know, maybe take it back to committee, we could work on this more. I have not had a conversation with administration about this piece, frankly. Big important pieces they usually call, I have not gotten a call on this piece. So, you know, I'm going to say I'm not there yet, but I think we can maybe do some work on this.
Yes, so we can definitely work to narrow down the, the language. But the intent is to allow places of worship, community centers, you know, event centers, you know, where Wilmington family can actually sit together and, and be together as a family. That's the intent of the legislation, actually.
Thank you. Councilmember Spadola.
Never mind, Council President, thank you.
Councilmember Willauer.
Yeah, just being, I did look at the zoning map, and there are the M one districts that are, you know, pretty close to neighborhoods, pretty close to residential communities. And these kinds of uses, I just think it's important for the community to have the opportunity to weigh in. So I'm not sure it makes sense to, to make this, these uses by right in M one districts. I think that the current situation where they have to go through a variance enables that community engagement to be required.
Thank you. Any other council members have any questions? Councilmember Harley.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So to the gentleman there, again, if an entity needed to, to apply for a specific zoning, would they be able to, where the community could weigh in? That, that really is the point that I wanted to make as it relates to if this legislation passed tonight, and there's an entity that wanted to change it for whatever reason, wouldn't they be able to apply to the zoning board to be able to do whatever work that needed to be done? So it's about mixed use, is that correct?
No, it's not really about mixed use. It's just adding those specific languages to, to the, to the, to the uses that are allowed in M one. But your question about if, if someone wants to do something different in those M one districts, you know, this proposal is not actually changing the existing requirements in the M one district. So definitely if they want something, there's still an opportunity for them to come forward with what they're proposing and will look, they will look the viability of what they're proposing and see if it's something the planning department can recommend.
Follow up, Mr. President?
Yes.
So I'm not saying this particular, this legislation is for mixed use. What I'm saying is could both reside in the same area. That's what I was asking. So if it was currently a waterfront area and a church wanted to build something like a, like a hall, a dining hall, I mean, mixed use from that, that perspective.
Okay, that's in the M one district, if they want to build like a church in the M one district, is that a question?
Yes.
Yes, this, that will make it allowed as a matter of right, given this proposal.
So today, if they wanted to build it, what would that look like? Would they have to apply?
Oh, yes. Right now, as it stands, they will have to apply through the ZBA for, for a hearing process. And because right now, commercial recreation and public assembly and the church would follow on the public assembly. Right now, that is not allowed in M one district.
Thank you. You answered my question. That's all I have, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. So if I'm hearing it correctly, right now, there needs to be community involvement. If this passes, there wouldn't need to be community involvement, correct?
There's still a form of community involvement, you know, the difference is that it's, they won't, this will bypass ZBA. And, and ZBA does not necessarily mean community involvement. Because even as it stands now, with this proposal, developers will still have to meet with the community before they can build. So that community involvement is still there, will still be there with, if this is approved, still. It's not taken away, we're not dividing, we're not taking away that community involvement from this. But rather, we're just trying to make, we're trying to save the time, we're trying to save some hurdles, some developmental, some development hurdles that's already standing currently. That's just what we're trying to take away. But the community involvement piece of it will still be there.
Okay, just a follow-up. Does the ZBA usually lean on community's involvement on their, on their wishes, on their experience?
So from my understanding of the ZBA is that they look at, they test hardship. The developer would have to prove hardship, you know, and that means that the project they are trying to, they are proposing, the, the current legislation is not allowing them to do that, and they will have to, they will have to pass the hardship test. So it's, the ZBA is more about the hardship test, the developer to pass the hardship test. More, it's more about that than community, actually.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember McCoy.
Thank you. So I just wanted to give a little bit of information when it came to the ZBA. I've done quite a few and gone to these meetings. Yes, they will, they've asked the council person and also the community for their opinion. But as the gentleman stated, they are based on proving the hardship. If they're unable to, if they've already purchased the land, that's another thing too. If the land is already purchased, then they will mostly sway toward who actually owns the land. I've actually had community come out and who were not in favor of something being built. But because the, because it was already zoned a certain way, it was, you know, we really, all we could do was basically give our opinion and give our opposition to it, but it still came. Now, thank goodness, you know, it worked out. But that was the first time I actually realized that when something is zoned, you don't, they don't always have to come to the community. It is a, almost like a pleasantry, making certain that the community is involved. It's not, it's not a policy, it's more like a practice. And I do feel like we need to make certain that it is a policy if we wanted to, if you wanted to circumvent and make certain that M one is something that you don't have to go to the ZBA, it has to be a policy that the, that the person, yeah, that the person has to go to the community. And then also give the opportunity for planning to be more closely involved with the council person. Because the council person already heard about what's going on. It's lots of times we're getting information from planning telling us what they would like to see happen, rather than having this conversation back and forth to find out whether or not this is something that will work good for the community. That's all I had.
Thank you. Do any other council members have any questions or comments? Does anyone from the community and council chambers have any comment, any questions? Is there anyone virtually who has any comment or question?
I have a question.
There is someone from the community, you may come forward, ma'am. I am going to ask, Kobe, can she, can you let her sit right behind you, please? Thanks. Thank you for joining us. Please introduce yourself.
Okay, my name is Dora Williams, and I do not live in the city. However, I am a part of St. Andrews and St. Matthew's Housing Task Force. And also, I'm a part of Delaware Concerned Residents for Environmental Justice. And I would like to ask a question about the by right feature because I am acquainted with that from Newcastle County's Comprehensive Plan. And if I understand it correctly, is that when a parcel of land is by right, it is already owned? And the community usually does not have the right to interfere. And whatever the situation is, that whatever event is initiated regarding by right, it's usually just administrative. It doesn't really have anything to do with whether the community wants it or not. So I don't know if that's what we're talking about, but it sounds like it, so.
All right, thank you very much.
I have to say, and I'm concerned about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the community and, and council chambers? WITN, is there anyone virtually? All right, going to take it back to council, councilmember Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, I'm going to piggyback off a little bit what Councilman Johnson said. And this was confusing in the committee meeting. And sometimes we need people, whoever is, you know, handling this or whatever. Sometimes we need individuals to come in and speak on their behalf. Because sometimes we don't know everything, and
And like Chris said, you know, I'm just going to say, sometimes if you have a project, you need to come in and speak on it sometime, because we just don't know all the ins and outs of every things. And sometimes it can be a bit confusing as now I'm listening to Councilman McCoy, and I do remember we were in the hearing, and if they owned the property, really, the lady saying the same thing, the community didn't have much to say. And I think we were sitting up here like like this is, you know, taking this real lightly. And I think it's more of a conversation that we should be having on this. And I don't and I'm, you know, I don't know, I see both sides, but sometimes you need to have more of a conversation about some things that's affecting, because this sounds like it's going to affect a lot of communities. And then I'm hearing that, you know, we can come in front of it, other communities come in front of it and make a suggestion about what they may want there, but if they don't own the property, what are they coming out? So I'm a little confused myself, so it's weird. But I do know I was in the zoning with McCoy, then it was a lot of community residents, and it didn't mean anything.
Thank you.
This is not in that area, and it's kind of like, it's kind of awesome. I just want to make a statement.
All right, thank you. Seeing no other hands raised, no other concerns from council members, councilmember Cabrera?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have to admit, I was confused trying to understand the difference on what we currently do, why we're changing it, and, you know, and how does that impact the community? So in trying to get clarity, what I did discover is that this ordinance is updating and modernizing our Wilmington zoning laws to reflect the current use. So this change does what we would want to have in our community, opportunities for investment in family-friendly recreational activities. This is not about building clubs or corner stores. This is about providing an option for our residents to have fun and safely gather and assemble. And from reading when someone brought up, what does assembly mean, in the legislation, public assembly means an indoor or outdoor facility or place where people gather for civic, educational, religious, social, or cultural purposes. That definition encompasses uses such as assembly halls, community centers, conference or event venues, auditoriums, stadiums, banquet halls, and places of worship. So a church can go there as well. Right now, in a manufacturing zone, none of those things could be placed there. Only manufacturing can go in there. And manufacturing can cause just as much harm as we saw in Southbridge with that recycling plant that stunk up the whole city from near and far and into North Wilmington and eventually got shut down, because it just wasn't a good use. But it was allowed to be there because it's manufacturing. Right now, we have commercial zones like downtown. So if somebody wants to put a restaurant, they go through the commercial zone. They still have to go through the licensing procedures that we have in place. That is not bypassed, just that they can go into a commercial zone, and that's what the use is allowed there. So right now, we can't put these type of business, we can't put anything in those M one, M two, M three, and they're already adjacent to communities, but there is a buffer because manufacturing requires that there's a buffer for the safety of the community. It can't be right next to it. And I think the things that we're talking about are pretty large versus I know there's M one zones in different areas of the city. But in one of those M one zones, as pointed out by councilmember Owens, a person could put a church now without having to go through all the hoops, which means a church would be allowed in M one in those areas in different neighborhoods. But to have like a facility, like a sports arena or something like that, there's only few places in Wilmington that would lend to that. I remember reading the article about the PAL wanting to put a recreational center in a pool. So let's say that they were to be choose land near an M one, this would permit for that to happen in an M one where currently it does not. They would have to show a hardship, they own the lands, things like that, as we mentioned. But if, you know, council members are not clear and want to sit down and have further conversation, I had to have further conversation to understand it. I mean, I know that I'm the sponsor because I'm the chair of the committee, but that doesn't mean I understand every little detail. So I picked up the phone, I asked questions. I wanted to be clear about what is allowed and not allowed for all the reasons that were stated here today. But looking at this, this is stuff that will promote more gathering spaces and recreational facilities that our families can enjoy, which they are doing now, because a lot of our city children do participate in activities at the Seventy Sixers Sports Arena. My grandson has played there multiple times. So that is that is what the legislation is.
Yes, just before we proceed, going to give Deputy Chief of Staff Daniel Walker an opportunity
Thank you.
To come and speak.
Thank you, President Congo, members of Wilmington City Council. For the record, my name's Daniel Walker, Deputy Chief of Staff to Mayor Carney. I want to provide some insight into some of the comments that I heard tonight in order to provide a little bit of clarity into what this does and will not allow. There are two things that I heard that I want to make sure are clear, one of which is Councilman Johnson, we wholeheartedly agree with the impact that certain services can bring to communities, which is why, you know, we are working diligently to rectify those situations. With this regard, your mention of the broadness of the public assembly definition specifically with relation to social services and clinics, just want to make sure we state that clinics will not fall underneath this definition. Secondly, I know justification came up, and is a reality for a lot of communities across Wilmington, specifically with regards to investment that could be done once some improvements are made. Restaurants came up. Restaurants are also not included in this definition for the recreational activities. We want to underscore two important things. First of all, right now, a lot of these M one districts have dilapidated and deteriorating property in them. And it's because they're not viable investments, considering the cost that it takes for individuals to come before the ZBA. The ZBA is a body in which individuals have to do their due diligence, and as people looking to do business in this in our city, that should be required. However, the requirements for that are hefty. It requires planners, architects, many cases, engineers. That limits our small and minority businesses looking to transform these dilapidated and deteriorating corridors in Wilmington. Additionally, this is about letting people know Wilmington is open for business. People are making investments now differently than they did when I was a child, differently than they did five years ago. I never thought I would say this, but ChatGPT is real, and people and developers across the country are using AI tools to find places that are ripe for business now. They are not looking at tools in areas where they have to go through a prolonged and protracted process that doesn't guarantee an outcome. That limits Wilmington's potential to get elements that families, residents, communities have begged for. For so long, I'm not a native to Wilmington. I've been here 13 years now. And since I moved here, one thing is clear, people say, we want things to do in Wilmington that we don't have to leave the city for. This policy will allow us to update our laws in order to do that, to provide recreation space, to provide assembly space. If a church wants to build a dining hall, right now, they can't do that if they're in an M one district. If a community center wants to expand or even open, there are places across our city where we need some more hubs for families, where we need recreational activity for our children after school. We don't have large swaths of land in Wilmington, but what we do have are parcels that are currently underdeveloped. They're looking for that opportunity. So two things I want to underscore. One, our current process is disincentivized for small and minority businesses who are coming to find recreational activity. We don't think that's fair to them, but that's the standard right now with the ZBA process. Secondly, people aren't looking to invest in areas where the outcome is unsure. And so the purpose of this proposal, and why the Land Use and Planning Department put it forth, is to be reflective of what other cities are doing, what our code is currently silent on, and what impacts the people we want to help the most, and do the things that we say we want to do. Provide outlets for family-oriented fun, provide outlets for community engagement, provide outlets for community participation. That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Councilmember Owens, did you have your hand raised? Yes.
Yeah, I did. Thank you for that, Deputy Chief of Staff Walker. But I want to bring it back to my points. So again, this is taking away the voice of the community to have a opportunity to have a say on this. And it was stated two speakers ago that there's nothing like this already happening in an M one district. But if you pull up the zoning map, the Chase Field House is currently in that, that's a recreational zone that has brought more traffic, and it's also brought entertainment, and it has been a benefit to the city. But again, we should give the right to the community that lives near these facilities that they want to bring in, the opportunity to at least have a say in the process. And that is all I am saying. Anyone who knows me knows I'm very passionate about community centers, regardless of where they're at. I have three in my district alone. But since the PAL was mentioned, I will say, the property that the PAL is building, it's in the county, and we had to follow all the county zoning, we had to work with the Penrose Community, we had to work with the Northwest Civic Association, we had to work with the First District Planning Council, and we brought everyone in on that planning. The same thing happened when we brought a new library to the First District. Everyone came around the table and had an opportunity to have a say on what was going to go in and what was going to be beneficial to the community. So again, that's how it should be done. It shouldn't just be a developer coming in saying, this is what we're going to put there, and this is how we're going to make money off of this community. We should at least give the opportunity to the community to say, hey, maybe we don't want all that extra traffic, maybe we don't want a concert hall, maybe we don't want this or that, right? If a church is in a community, they're doing work in the community. I don't think this, I don't think any of us have an issue with a place of worship trying to expand their services. That's not what I'm saying. I'm sure that's not what other people are saying. I'm just saying, give the community an opportunity to continue to have a say in this process. And it's just like any other zone, right? Any other zoning, if you are trying to pick something in that does not fit the current zoning, you just go through the ZBA. You have that community input. When we make it matter of right, we take that away from our community, especially for something like this. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson, then Councilmember McCoy.
I appreciate, again, similar to Councilman Owen, I appreciate Deputy Chief of Staff Walker. I certainly share a lot of his views, someone who looks at what I've supported, very pro-business, very pro-community as well. So I think there's a way to do it that we can, it can be more nuanced. This is something that frankly, I think is involves a lot of small meetings, involves a lot of trying to work with us to curate a way, changes some some language, but this is a big step, because again, we don't want to look five, 10, 15 years from now, and we have these things in our neighborhoods that people say, well, why is it there? It's there because council, you know, back in 2025 voted on this. So I understand the sentiment. We want to build, we incentivize building, but we also need community input, and that's what I know I'm a champion of on the West Side, and we continue to do it. And we can get entertainment venues, we need to improve the ZBA process. I wanted to say, the chair of the ZBA, I've received complaints that they don't reach out. I was at a committee meeting Monday, that when you call, they don't reach out. Let's improve that process. Let's approve the chair and the staff working for the chair. Why do people reach out and don't get a response? That we should fix as well. So I'm saying, not because I don't say no, never, I'm going to say, let's improve the ZBA process in general, sit down at a table and and get this the right way.
Thank you. Councilmember Bracy, then Councilmember Field.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think Councilman Johnson just hit, I was going to say, people keep bringing up community, 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 but the and that we're taking something away from the community, but it's not there now. If I'm hearing correctly, in the current zoning process, even if someone goes to the zoning board, they're going to the zoning board with all of their paper, with all of their plans, with all of their, you know, you know, the, you know, everything that they've done as far as what's required by the zoning board, but what's not required is community input. It's it's suggested and encouraged. So we're not taking anything away because it's not there now. So I think there's another conversation that needs to be had about how do we make sure that there is a requirement for community input? Because we're not taking something away, it doesn't exist. It's suggested and encouraged. So I think there are two conversations that are going right now, and I'm not sure how we resolve it, but I think that there really is two different things that are happening right now. The legislation that we have in front of us doesn't take anything away from the community because we still haven't fixed the process. So I think there's a process piece that if people care about making sure that there's a requirement for community input, we need to go back and look at that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Field, then Councilmember McCoy, then Councilmember Harley.
Yes, so I just think this is too complex, the discussion, it's too unclear what the end goal is. It's too, it's not clear what the problem is that this legislation would be solving. It's not clear that there won't be unintended consequences. And I think if it's that important, then Land Use and Planning and the mayor's office need to be working the phones before the meeting to build up support for it. And so I think this, my suggestion is that this be withdrawn, and the proponents of it can address these questions and likely bring it back to gain support in the future.
All right, thank you.
Yes, actually, Councilman Bracy kind of spoke about what I wanted to state. I do feel like we need to actually bring it back. Like I stated, it's supposed to be, it's suggested, it's not really required when it comes to community input. And if it's such a hardship, getting all of that material together for the zoning board, if you were able to just do it with planning, but then still get a chance to have those conversations with the community, with the councilperson, and then the councilperson meets with that entity in planning, I feel like then you'll finally get find out exactly what's happening in this area. For them to put together a presentation, a lot of times, by the time it gets from the from the community center presentation to the zoning board, it looks different, but yet they're still look, they're still wanting support. So I just would suggest, when it comes to this piece of legislation, making certain that if you if they don't, if they you wish for not, I'm sorry, if you wish for them not to have to make so much of an investment, a financial investment, in order to put together a plan, the community needs to be involved early on, just early on. So that way, we do not lose out on this investment. We don't want anyone to waste any money, you know, that's, but we would like to see things happen within our communities, but we definitely will make certain that our community has has support for what's whatever's coming.
Councilmember Harley?
Thank you, Council President. So I do want to echo the sentiments of Councilmember Owens as it relates to making sure that we have community input, because I know for a fact that today, there are a number of projects that take place where the zoning board has to make sure that there is community input. So as it relates to the matter of right use, is there any way possible that there could be a clause based on community input with the community, you know, having the opportunity to be heard? If I'm not mistaken, I thought that, and and I'm not 100% sure, so I'm putting that out there right now, that when we discussed the marijuana bill, there were certain areas that were considered M one. that were considered M1, but the community had to weigh in. Like, they just couldn't automatically decide to, to open a marijuana, a business because it's M1, but they had to make sure that the community weighed in on it. So I'm using that as an example to my understanding, and I am hoping that we could consider something along those lines for this as well. So that's, that's what I have to say, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is it okay to also invite my planning manager?
Sure.
Mr. President, I think at this point, with everything that we're hearing, the input that we're getting from our colleagues, I believe that everyone needs a little bit more time to digest this, to, you know, see exactly how it works, and to maybe put some of those parameters that we discussed. So at this point, we're going to hold it. I don't think we need to continue with public comment. And then, Mr. President, I move that council return to the regular order of business.
It's been moved in second that council returning to the regular order of business. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Are we going to move forward with the community report? Or is that, okay. Councilmember Cabrera, do you have any other legislation?
No, Mr. President, that is it.
Okay. Councilmember Owens?
Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Second. Ordinance number 25-054, agenda number 0113, an ordinance to establish a temporary moratorium on foreclosures due to property tax increases as long as the owner is on a payment plan.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to establish a temporary moratorium on foreclosures due to a proper, due to property tax increases as long as the owner is on a payment plan.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that this be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance number 25-055, agenda number 0114, an ordinance to amend Chapter 37 of the city code to prohibit the parking of tow trucks on city streets.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend Chapter 37 of the city code to prohibit the parking of tow trucks on city streets.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that this be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Public Safety Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Public Safety Committee.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the third and final reading.
Ordinance number 25-033, agenda number 0071, an ordinance to amend Chapter 8 of the city code to create an education workforce down payment and settlement assistance program.
Mr. President, I move that this be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance and call for the yea and nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, that be known as the enacting clause of the ordinance and called for a yea or nay vote on the question.
Mr. President, before we get to that, I have a floor amendment for item 0071. This, I make a motion, I make a motion on the floor to amend this legislation, and it's a few different pieces, so please bear with me here. The first one is on page three. This, again, is creating new language. It's adding administrative professionals. Again, this is for people who work in the main office. Two, the second one, is deleting the following language. A resolving loan fund shall be established for the purpose of making available loans of grants or capital budget funds to eligible homeowners. That's taking that out. Number three, inserting the following language to create a new section, 8-7C-X, and X will say, employment conditions shall be certified by school district annually on the date of settlement. Number five, or number four, is deleting 120% for the Wilmington AMI and substituting that for 100%. That is in line with what you see on the screen here in our current program. And then, page five is just adding the following impact statement. There's no anticipated financial fiscal impact as the city will use CDBG grant funds and other program funds.
Second.
Are there any questions about the amendment? Councilmember Oliver?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to make it clear for the public that there's no impact from our constituents from the city of Wilmington. There's no fiscal impact from taxpayers. I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Thank you. So at this time, we're going to take a vote on the amendment. Yes, Councilmember McCoy?
I know, I'm sorry. Vote on the amendment first.
All in favor of the floor amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Councilmember McCoy, did you have any questions?
Oh, no, I didn't have any questions. I was just going to make a statement.
Okay. Councilmember Owens?
Yeah, so again, this year, city council has made great strides to get involved with our fight to create better schools for our city residents, especially our youngest residents here. And a part of that is being able to recruit and retain quality educators and individuals that work within our school systems here in our public schools and public charter schools within the boundaries of the city of Wilmington. This legislation, again, will help us with that. We have an amazing first-time homeowner buyer program right now. This just tailors our focus into looking to help recruit and retain people in our school systems. And again, this legislation was, it was birthed out of many conversations with educational groups, as well as the DSEA as well, too, and members of union. So again, that's why I brought this forward. It's a great opportunity to really highlight our city, but then also to bring in working class people, to get them into homeowner opportunities within our neighborhoods.
All right, thank you. I would like to be added as a co-sponsor. Councilmembers, McCoy, Councilmember McCoy?
Yes, so I would like to be added as a co-sponsor. I'd just also like to say, thank you for giving me a call. I got a chance to read it. I did have questions, which you answered. I do think it's a great piece of legislation. I, I love the fact that we're going to try to encourage more people in education to come to our city. This is already a great program. We, I'm finding out that the money is spent on regularly. So we are already getting people to be homeowners here within the city, but to also be trying to get people here who are educators for our children, to grow our village. I think this will be, this is a great piece of legislation. So I do, I would like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Thank you. Councilmember Harley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I also want to commend Councilmember Owens for presenting and sponsoring this legislation. I had the opportunity to talk to him about this, and most importantly, I think that he's been very innovative in terms of the long-term goal, in terms of working with our private sector as it relates to us trying to go out to get additional funding. And so I really like that innovative thinking as it relates to how we can work better together with the private sector, and I would like to be added as a co-sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Darby?
Yes, I would like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Councilmember Willauer?
Yes, I would like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Thank you. Give the floor back, back to Councilmember Owens.
I'll call for the vote.
All right, clerk, please call for the roll. Councilmember Johnson did ask to be excused.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Willauer?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bracy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Eleven yeas, two absent.
Declared adopted. Councilmember Darby?
Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance number 25-056, agenda number 0115, an ordinance amending Chapter 42 of the city code regarding the paving of privately controlled, non-dedicated alleys.
First reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance amending Chapter 42 of the city code regarding the paving of privately controlled, non-dedicated alleys.
Second reading of the ordinance.
Mr. President, I move that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer it to the Public Works and Transportation Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Public Works and Transportation Committee.
Mr. President, I have a resolution to present. Resolution 25-054, agenda number 0116, whereas Wilmington City Council recognizes the importance of transparency, accountability, I move this resolution be received, recorded, and filed and adopted by a yea and nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, the resolution be received, recorded, filed, and adopted by a yea or nay vote on the question.
Yes, so, so this piece of legislation is amending our city council rule. It's about Wilmington deserving a council that is present, transparent, and engaged. So with this, it's requiring that we're present in council chambers when we are voting. So it doesn't take away the opportunity for you to come virtually, if you need to come virtually, but you won't be able to vote. However, I realize that it will be violate state code if I did not include, or align with Dell Code 1006A, which outlines rules for virtual participation in government meetings for people with disabilities and medical conditions. I also, after learning that I had to have that exemption, I also was like, well, what other exemptions could exist? And I thought about city council travel. So when you're on city council travel and city council business, you'll be able to vote virtually. It would count as a vote. So I think this protects the integrity of votes. I know I got a lot of complaints from constituents about council people not showing up when they're coming out for votes, how council people show up on Zoom and present theirself. A lot of constituents complain about that. And I think this gives a great balance between, a balance between moderate flexibility, right? Virtual options with the traditional expectations of presence. It's about transparency and accountability, showing up to do the work. And I already know we struggle with public trust, so like, I think this, with us having this, will be more engaged, being able to come in person and show the community that we will show up. And then, I think there was one more thing I wanted to talk about. Oh, yeah, at the beginning of, it says at the beginning of each council meeting, the city clerk shall identify which council members are attending virtually and the reason for the virtual particip, virtual participating. So it doesn't have to, if you have a medical condition, we're not going to reveal, like, oh, they have a medical condition, but yeah, they fit the exemption requirement not to attend. So it doesn't have to go into specifics. You don't have to reveal what your disability or medical is, but it will say that, the council president will say, these people do fit that criteria for the exemption, the one that I have to have by law, and the other one with the city council travel. So that is the legislation.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions from any council members? Any comments? Councilmember McCoy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually had gotten a chance to have a conversation with you and the Chief of Staff about attendance previously. This was something that was heavy on my heart because I had noticed the fact that we were definitely having issues with getting into our, to the chambers. I will proudly say that in my first term, I was, I think I was clocked at about 92% attendance, and that was before we were doing Zoom at all, that was before COVID. And so by having my colleagues with me, around me, I felt that that was very important, that I felt we were very, being very trivial why we were not being here, and we would come and go as we pleased. Once we were done our legislation, we would just leave. We would just shut off Zoom, and that was unacceptable. I wanted to move forward with that, and then I decided not to. The reason why I decided not to is because, for one, I started to see that my colleagues were having sincere concerns about safety at one point. And I'm like, I said, so who am I to sit and tell someone when they can and cannot feel safe in their place of business? So that was one of the reasons why I pulled back, but I mean, I, and then also, I realized that, what was that? I think that might have been June or July. I witnessed you on the committee of the whole, and you actually addressed it. And once you addressed it, I started seeing more and more people making certain that they were contacting you and letting them know, letting you know, when they were going to be in and out. Once you made certain that it was addressed, and so, and I commend you on that. So I thank you for making certain that more people were letting us know what a council was going to look like. So I don't really think that it's needed at this moment. The reason why I state that is because I do not want to put my, the way I feel about things and the rules that I want to follow onto my colleagues. So that's why I backed off of it initially.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Owens?
Yeah, I do have one question with this. So I see that you have paid travel in here, paid city travel in here, but sometimes we do have to travel for our day jobs as well, too. Is there a reason that's not included in here?
No, it's not a reason why it wasn't included. I, I messaged and text people and didn't get, I didn't, yeah, I didn't get that feedback.
All right, thank you. Any other council members? If not, I'll return to the sponsor. Councilmember Darby?
Yes, I also want to say on the state level, they have, we looked at what they did in regards to attendance, and this was something similar that they implemented, that you had to be in person. They, the excuse about safety or not safety is another issue, is not, I'm not going to show up, right? That's probably something else, another way we can address it, but not by not showing up. So in regards to that, and they only give virtual options, of course, they have to follow state code in regards to if someone has a disability, but they're actually very strict down there in regards to attending, being in person, and then also documenting why you can't attend when you don't attend. So I also want to say that the state does this, and other cities do this. The city of Wilmington has been very lax in that in regards to council members showing up, and how they're showing up on Zoom has been a complaint by the community. So this legislation came from the community in regards to what they want to see from us, and I really believe that Wilmington deserves a city council that is present, transparent, and engaged, and they have not been getting that from us, and I have heard the complaints. So thank you.
All right, thank you. And with this being a rule change, we will need two-thirds, it will need two-thirds support from council. We have 11 members present, so that means we will need eight council members to support it in order for it to pass. Clerk, please call for the roll, for the vote.
Councilmember Owens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
No.
Councilwoman Harley?
No.
Councilwoman Willauer?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
No.
Councilman Field?
Present.
Councilwoman Bracy?
No.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
No.
Councilman Spadola?
No.
President Congo?
Yes.
Four yeas, six nays, one present, and two absent.
Thank you. Declared defeated.
Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the third and final reading.
Ordinance number twenty-five dash zero-two-seven, agenda number zero-zero-six-eight, an ordinance to amend chapter two of the city code to codify the ability to schedule a referendum to amend the city's charter.
Mr. President, I have a substitute to present in lieu of that ordinance.
Substitute number one, ordinance number twenty-five dash zero-two-seven, an ordinance to amend chapter two of the city code to codify the ability to schedule a referendum to amend the city's charter.
Mr. President, I move that be known at the, as the enacting clause of the substitute ordinance and call for a yea and nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second that be known as the enacting clause. Excuse me. The ordinance and call for a yea and nay vote on the question.
Yes, I would like to start off with the floor amendment to get that, get that out the way. There were a few little tweaks I had to make just to clarify some things after talking to my council colleagues. Um, so I would like to make, uh, I would, I move to make a floor amendment at this time. A motion to make a floor amendment.
Okay.
Um, on page two, delete the proposed two-six-A-B in its entirety and replace with the following language. Section two-eight-six-eight-six, referendum to amend the charter formation by public petition for charter commission. A charter commission shall be elected when a petition bearing the signatures of at least ten percent of the qualified voters of the city is filed with the city clerk. The petition shall contain the following. Referendum question, registered voter information included first name, middle name, last name of voter, street add- address, date of birth, contact information, email, signature, and date of signature. Upon certification of significant signatures, council shall adopt a resolution setting the date, time, and place for the election of a charter commission. Number two, on page two of agenda number zero-zero-six-eight, delete the proposed section two-six-eight-seven-B in its entirety and replace with the following language. Section two-six-eight-seven, election of a charter commission. Signature verification, the city clerk shall submit the petition signatures to the Department of Election for verification. Number three, on page three of agenda item number zero-zero-six-eight, add in the following underlying language to the proposed section two-six-eight-A-one, function of the charter commission. Section two-six-eight-eight, function of the charter commission duties, the commission shall have authority to propose amendments to the city charter that have been, that have been petitioned by the residents and met all section two-six-eight-seven requirements. On page five of agenda item number zero-six-six, zero-zero-six-eight, add in the following underlying language to the proposed, um, section two-six-nine-eight. No charter amendment shall be per- permitted that twenty-two-dell-C-eight-zero-one prohibits. The Law Department shall advise whether proposed amendments are prohibited. That's all the amendments.
All right, thank you. So at this time, are there any questions from any?
Second.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions from any council members? We will take a vote on the amendment. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Amendment passed. Uh, councilmember, councilmember Darby?
So, yes, so I want to give a little bit of history really quick on how I even discovered that the city can do referendum. So I am not giving authority for the city to do anything. We can already do it. This is a housekeeping bill to clarify the process. Um, so back of, in my last term, there was a residency fight, um, to try to keep, um, the city employees in our city. Um, and in my research, I discovered that in the nineties, the city did a referendum vote, which is a public vote about that very issue. Um, and at that time, the city, um, the people came out and voted and decided that they wanted city employees to live in the city, which I thought was like, one, why didn't I know that this was a tool in my legislator box? And how do I do this again? So I've been working on this piece of legislation for almost two, three years now. I thought, um, in this, in trying to figure out how to do this, I thought a lot about how democracy works, checks and balancing, balances, and how the people should be engaged and involved. In my research, um, I learned that the state gives the city of Wilmington authority since, whenever, probably before the nineties, but gi- gives the city authority to do referendum public votes today, right now. The city charter also states it. However, the process of the how still wasn't clear. So in this, this legislation outlines that. So how did I come up with how to do it? One, I took, I mimicked the language from the state code. So most of this language is not new, except for, um, providing public education, because right now, the community would not know how to do this, when to do this, or where to find it. So what I added was public information and education, a section on that. And then I also added for publication, instead of just doing newspapers, to add social media platforms to promote, um, the public vote and the referendum to provide education. Um, outside of that, most of it came from the actual state charter, and we're putting it into our city charter to provide a clear, um, outline of how to do a referendum. We can do it already. However, without process, we know there's room for error, there's room for chaos, lawsuits, and just complete lack of knowledge of how to do anything. So, um, we looked at the state code. I had a few meetings with the Department of Election. I actually did a committee of the whole meeting to do education to city council. Um, the Department of Election created a presentation for me, and it was emailed out to all of council to review. I reached out to my council colleague and received the feedback. I reached out to community to get feedback on this, and I looked at what other cities were doing. So there were hundreds of cities who do referendums already. Um, just a name of food, Grand Junction, Colorado, Bellington, Bellingham, um, Wisconsin, Land, San, Landar, Landor, Landrow, California, Medford, Oregon, Loveland, Colorado. So Lawrence, Kansas. These are all cities, um, around seventy K, sixty K, ninety K, because I don't want to hear the argument about, oh, we're a small city. There's other cities of similar size who have the same authority we're doing, and they're actively doing referendums. Once you read the piece of legislation, there are two ways for a referendum to happen. City council can say, hey, this issue came up, we want the community to vote on it. So nine of us would then have a res- vote on a resolution, and then that would initiate in ninety days a public vote to take place. That's one way. The second way is the community can say, we care about this particular issue, we're going to go out, we're going to knock doors, we're going to get ten percent of registered voters' signatures and all the other information they need to be verified. We're going to get that. And then what happens is initiates two things, which the state, um, outlines. It outlines that it needs to start a charter commission, which is made up of a whole nother election in its own process to get community people on a charter commission. Once that charter commission is established of people who volunteer, that they want to be on it, and then there's an election, once that's established, that charter commission then prepares for a vote to happen within ninety days. So there's two ways for it to be initiated. Um, and you can do it around any issue that you want to do it around. Um, and that's like, very, very much the premise of it. It does not take away any authority. It doesn't add authority because it's already something we can do. Currently, right now, there's no process written out. When there's no process, chaos, lawsuits, error, no public education, it just makes it very hard to be able to implement things. So that's what this legislation is about. It's about just simply a housekeeping bill to make sure that a process is in our city charter. What I don't want to happen is from, what, nineties was what, thirty years ago, almost forty years ago now? I don't want thirty, forty years to go down and another councilperson like myself finds out that this happened in the nineties, and they're like, how do we still do this process? I want, I think about sustainability. I think about, as a legislator, how do I make sure I have tools in my toolbox? So when I leave this position, because I'm not going to do this forever, um, that other councilpeople, um, behind me know that they have this tool in their toolbox that they can use as a legislator, and that the public also knows that they can participate in this democracy. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cabrera.
Councilmember Darby, is there, uh, a cost to, to join this? Because I guess when I hear referendum, that means that we would put something out for the public to vote. Would that happen during a normal election cycle and it would be added to the ballot? Or are we proposing to do special elections to do a referendum on an off-election year?
Both can happen, right? So if there's a, if we propose, let's say we do it. Let's say we propose for a vote to happen, and the election is happening within a certain timeframe, I forgot what it was, um, in the election, um, within six months. So if a, um, a local general election occurs within the six months, then the referendum will be with that. Now, let's say there's not an election in six months, and we want to do a referendum. We can also have a vote that happens and takes place. So the Department of Election broke down in the presentation on how much that would cost for the machines, a estimate on how much it would cost to rent a building out. Um, so they came up with the cost in there. Um, but it will only be a cost if we initiate that, um, or the community initiates that.
Follow-up?
Yes.
Would the election look like our regular elections, or would we pick, like they do for early voting? There's two or three locations. Because I, I'm thinking, you know, the expense of an election. So I guess I have a couple of questions. One, who pays? Is it the Department of Election that pays for this? Or does the city of Wilmington pay for this? Does this come out of our budget? And can we condense it? Or is it going to be all the voting locations like we normally do?
Yeah, so we, we make that decision. So we can decide if we have two locations, we could, there's no parameters around that, right? And in regards to cost, that comes from the city. So back in the nineties, they had a, the city paid for the referendum, which cost of living was different. So it was, the cost was different.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from council members? Councilmember Harley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So, um, the way that our voting system is set up today, um, after each census, uh, Department of Election, they let us know what the, the, the target number should be in all eight districts. And it basically lets us know that you can't be five percent over or five percent under to avoid gerrymandering. I'm trying to understand in a process like this, where are the guidelines? Or where are the parameters to, to avoid gerrymandering? For example, um, if you live in the first district, um, I mean, how is it there, how is it equitable across all eight districts? Is what I was trying to figure out and understand with this process. What, what could, what would, um, keep an individual from going after just special groups that they may be affiliated with, to get them to put their names and addresses on there versus it being equitable across all eight districts? Because the Department of Elections, they make sure that these numbers are equitable. So I, I didn't really see with a referendum, just going out, getting, um, names on a petition, those ten percent. I didn't see any parameters to, to ensure that it's equitable across all eight districts.
Yeah, so best practice is, when I looked at other cities, no one did that. And once you do a election, we are, it's our responsibility to broadcast that out to everyone in the city. So once there's an election, just like there's an election for when we're voting, it's broadcasted and advertised to the whole city to come out and vote. So we can think about, um, equity when we think about where the polling locations are. I think that's going to be a good conversation about equity, or they make sure they're in certain neighbor, like, making sure they're not concentrating in certain neighborhoods. I think that's the conversation around equity. I think once the ten percent votes are collected and verified, like they do in other cities, they then open it up for the whole city to vote. So it's not at, like, once the vote happens, everyone gets an opportunity to vote.
Follow-up?
Yes.
No, I agree. Once, once it gets to the voting poll, my concern is the petition to get signed at ten percent before it even gets to the Department of Elections. That's where my concern is. How do you ensure that it's equitable before it gets there? Because according to what I read, you have to do the petition first, and then once the petition is signed, the ten percent, then it goes to the Department of Elections. Where are the, where are the guards to avoid one district getting majority of the votes or two districts versus it being equitable, is what I'm asking.
Yeah, so that's not best practice to enact process to say that you need a certain percentage in any area.
Well, that would be a concern of mine, because I think since the city of Wilmington is eight districts, that if there is a petition signed to do anything of that nature, it should be equitable. And I understand that it's not a best practice, but that's the issue that I would have with that.
Yes, and currently, right now, let's say we don't have a process.
Yep.
Someone can go out and get ten percent, because that's already in the state code. They can go out and do this right now, like literally, someone could be collecting signatures right now, and then turn it into the city and say, you have to follow state code. And if we don't have a process, then that, then they'll just do whatever they want to do in that process. So currently, that's what it is. And that's what the state code regulates it to be. So I didn't make up the ten percent or do that. That's all what the state says we have to do.
I read it. Thank you. You answered my question, thanks.
Thank you. Any other council members have any questions or comments? Councilmember McCoy?
Yeah, uh, ten percent? I'm not exactly certain what is ten percent of voters. I know what ten percent of the city would be. Um, this is the city clerk who's going to verify the petition signatures. That's, that's a lie. How many thousands of people is that?
It would be four thousand.
Uh, that would be four thousand of the voters.
Registered.
Am I able to respond?
Yes.
I know they're talking out of turn, but yeah. So, um, so in the piece of legislation, it states that the city clerk will submit the signatures to the Department of Election. Uh, let me find the section. For you. Um, so in section two-six-eight-seven, um, election, the city clerk shall verify petition signatures within thirty days of the following, following standards set by the city clerks. Hold up, where's the new one? In the amendment, it states that the city clerk shall submit, submit the petition signatures to the Department of Election for verification. So it's in the amendment.
Okay.
On page two, C, the city clerk shall submit the petition signatures to the Department of Election for verification. So the city clerk is not verifying it.
All right, thank you. Any other question? Any follow-up?
Yeah, I just had a follow-up. Um, a sponsor stated that she did get a chance to talk to the Department of Elections and get kind of an estimate of what it would cost in order to do a, an actual referendum. That wasn't at, was that added on here? Or just the, um, I guess just that conversation, just that piece giving us, um, an understanding of what a referendum would look like.
Yes, so, um, the Department of Election created the presentation, and I sent it out to all the city council members. So in one of the slides, they break that down, um, on exactly what the cost would be from the Department of Election. The, I can't speak to why, when I worked with the Law Department, there wasn't no direct fiscal impact unless a referendum takes place. So that's why you don't see a fiscal impact, um, in here, because it's currently unknown, and it's based on what the Department of Election has sent to everybody in the presentation.
Councilmember Oliver?
But one thing that I do know, that normally when it's a referendum that's being held, is for bulk, um, um, issues, um, in larger states, California, just say even maybe for, normally during the election school board, um, when it's a increase, um, and, and taxes, property taxes. So when I think of a referendum, just me personally, I just think of, um, major bulk. I know this is already in the charter, and just from me reading some of it, it appears that we would be taking, um, the power from the mayor, from the General Assembly. Um, we just, um, just looks like it's doing a lot. This is just my interpretation of what I'm reading, especially when you start talking about a commission. But like I said, other than that, as you stated, it's already, and if it's already in the charter, you know, and we're adding this and we're adding that, I just, this is also a bit much that should, um, yeah, uh, I'm not going to get into, but, uh, I'm just, just looking at it, it just appears to be.
But I'm just, just looking at it, it just appears to be a lot. And, you know, we worked hard to get in office and it just looks like it just diminishes, you know, your position, kind of. I mean, not kind of it does if you doing all of this. But, you know, I just want to make a statement that, and it would be a fiscal impact, that that's why Dover doesn't get involved with our special election because it costs us a lot of money for someone to run it large, et cetera. They say, no, you know, y'all do it, y'all mature enough, y'all should be able to do things legally in a proper way up there because they're not going to pay for it. So now you're talking about a statewide. So it would be a fiscal impact, just so everybody know, on the constituents. Department of Labor will not pay for this and the state's not paying for it. So it would come out of our residents' pocket.
Councilmember Cabrera? Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes, I do have a question that was posed to me. If someone doesn't have an email, is there, I mean, because it says it has to be an email, is there another form that they can verify? Or they have to have an email in order to proceed?
Councilmember Darby?
Yeah, so in this, we outlined some of the things that need to be included. But to be, to actually verify that you are a voter in this, for the Department of Election, I just, they just need your name. And I believe there's one other thing they just need, actually. I forgot. I did, oh, they just need your name and I think your, your address to verify if you're a voter. So those are the only required things to verify if you are a registered voter.
Thank you.
Thank you. See no other hands raised? Returning to the sponsor for any final comment?
Yeah, so this piece of legislation is just, it'll, we already can do referendums. A community person, right now, I'm letting y'all know at home, you can collect 10% of registered voters today. This doesn't have to pass tonight. And then you can come to the city and we won't have a process for you. Or if we pass this tonight, you'll come to the city and there will be a process. And there would be public education connected to it. There would be marketing connected to it. There would be some level of understanding and knowledge connected to it versus what we have now. So this is just a cleanup bill, a housekeeping bill. It is not taking away any power. It is a power that the community already has. And in other cities, when I talk to the other council people that does this, they do not feel like they're losing power. They actually look forward to doing this. And they actually have issues that are very specific. Sometimes it's about legalizing marijuana, sometimes, very specific things that they do in other cities. And none of them felt like they lost power when I talked to my other city council colleagues about this, in other cities about this legislation. So I'm just going to ask for a vote.
Clerk, please call.
Councilwoman Owens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
No.
Councilwoman Harley?
No.
Councilwoman Willauer?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
No.
Councilman Field?
No.
Councilwoman Bracy?
No.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
No.
Councilman Spadola?
No.
President Congo?
Yes.
Four yeas, seven nays, two absent.
Declared defeated. Councilmember Harley?
Yes, Mr. President. I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance number 25-057, agenda number 0117. An ordinance constituting amendment number one to the fiscal year 2026 annual operating budget, being an ordinance to amend substitute number one to ordinance number 25-009.
First reading of the ordinance?
An ordinance constituting amendment number one to the fiscal year 2026 annual operating budget, being an ordinance to amend substitute number one to ordinance number 25-009.
Second reading of the ordinance?
Mr. President, I move that it be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Economic Development and Finance Committee.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember McCoy?
Alright, Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance number 25-058, agenda number 0118. An ordinance to amend Chapter 44 of the City Code to exempt from the city's earned income tax the wages and compensation paid by the United States to any person for active service in the uniformed services of the United States.
First reading of the ordinance?
An ordinance to amend Chapter 44 of the City Code to exempt from the city's earned income tax the wages and compensation paid by the United States to any person for active service in the uniformed services of the United States.
Second reading of the ordinance?
Mr. President, I move that that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Finance and Economic Development Committee.
Mr. President, I have another ordinance to present and call for the first and second reading.
Ordinance number 25-059, agenda number 0119. An ordinance to approve the Anchorage Overlook Major Subdivision Plan and authorize the city to remove a segment of Anchorage Street from the official city map, improve a segment of Anchorage Street and name it Anchorage Street Extended, create a new street named Levi Lane, and accept the dedication of Anchorage Street Extended and Levi Lane as a public, as public rights of way and add them to the official city map.
First reading of the ordinance?
An ordinance to approve the Anchorage Overlook Major Subdivision Plan and authorize the city to remove a segment of Anchorage Street from the official city map, improve a segment of Anchorage Street and name it Anchorage Street Extended, create a new street named Levi Lane and accept the dedication of Anchorage Street Extended and Levi Lane as public rights of way and add them to the official city map.
Second reading of the ordinance?
Mr. President, I, Mr. President, I move that this be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Community Development and Urban Planning Committee.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second, that be known as the first and second reading of the ordinance and refer to the Community Development and Urban Planning Committee.
Okay, Mr. President, I do have another ordinance to present and call for the third and final.
He's, no, I'm sorry, we're still on, no, go ahead, I'm sorry. I'm with you next, I'm sorry. You're right. My fault.
No, you're fine. Mr. President, I have another ordinance to present and call for the third and final reading.
Ordinance number 25-018, agenda number 0044. An ordinance to amend Chapter 34 of the City Code to allow residential tenants and city properties to deposit withheld rent in a city-held escrow account.
Mr. President, I have a substitute to present in lieu of that ordinance?
Substitute number one to ordinance number 25-018. An ordinance to amend Chapter 34 of the City Code to allow residential tenants and city properties to deposit withheld rent in a city-held escrow account.
I move that, I move that this be known, then acting clause a substitute and call for a, wait a minute. But we needed, Councilwoman Oliver is doing the floor amendment. Is that going before my vote?
No, would be right now.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have a floor amendment to this agenda item 0044. A description of the floor amendment. The floor amendment adds in a requirement for city council to deevaluate this ordinance impact and preparing a budget negotiation for FY '27. The floor, the floor amendment, I move to make a floor amendment at this time as such.
Second.
Alright, this time we're going to vote on the floor amendment? Are there any questions?
She didn't give the floor amendment yet.
I'm giving it now.
Okay, thank you.
On page four of a review to agenda item 004, please insert the new section five that reads as follows. Council will evaluate the effectiveness and impact of this ordinance no later than March 31, 2026, in order to assess its outcomes and to gain a clear understanding of the funding requirement for a full-year implication.
Implementation.
That would be all.
Second.
Any questions about the floor amendment? Councilmember Harley?
Okay, oh yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to be clear that, I'll let Councilmember Oliver just repeat that. But the way that I interpret it is that there, this amendment is to make sure that this is working, this process is working. And I just wanted to make sure that that's what this amendment is all about, Mr. President.
Councilmember Oliver?
Yes, the floor amendment basic, is basically stating, we want to review this because it is a fiscal impact, just to see how it's being used, if it's being used. Because that's going to be around the budget time to see what budgetary amount we need, you know? How does, how's it working, basically?
Follow-up?
Yes, Councilmember Harley?
Oh, thank you, President. So is, to my understanding, if it's the escrow, the money is coming from the tenant? That, number one, the money is, the funds will be coming from the tenant to, to go into an escrow? And are we talking about the fiscal impact in terms of the program and what is costing the city to, to, to do this process? I guess that's what I'm trying to be clear on. Where is the fiscal impact?
Yes, Mr. President.
Yeah, that's what the, the floor amendment is stating, that we will come back and review it
based on the findings, the effectiveness of the impact of the ordinance.
Okay.
So, you know, if you need a, you know, you could say you may need a whole new clerk, you may need a whole new department, or you may not. They may pull some, so that's just, we're just looking at the effectiveness of the impact of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, this time we're going to take a vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Amendment passed. Councilmember McCoy?
Okay, yes. So I do want to state that Councilwoman Oliver did come to me. She, she did have the concerns about the ordinance when it came to the funding. And I, I'd rather not opt to make it a pilot because I really would like to see the state do something. If we need to end this, end this program, it should be superseded by something that the state is actually offered. So I felt that by, she then suggested, well, let's take a look at it. I'm like, oh yeah, so I'm definitely fine with reevaluating so that we can have a better understanding of what it will look like if we have to put this in the budget for the next fiscal year. So I would like to see how it was used and whether or not the fiscal impact that we have on here has a $301,700 note to it, attached to it. Myself and someone else I spoke to with, with knowledge, they, we do believe that this probably will not be the full, like, this probably will not be the amount that'll be used initially. But I do believe that if this thing goes well, we will probably end up having a look at that for the next fiscal year. This is going to be going out, we will be doing promotion. But I also got a chance to speak with LNI and they wanted to make certain that they had someone in place and trained before we would actually start, begin this. So I can actually kind of go over this a little bit. It says, ordinance, the synopsis suggests to amend to have the 34 of the City Code. And the fiscal impact, I just gave you the amount, is 301,700. LNI will require additional staffing, and they're including a clerk too, to manage the tenant intake and the code enforcement officer in order to conduct additional inspections. So this is, so by having conversation with LNI, the finance department, admin, and the law, we've had several meetings and this is kind of what we came up with. I did want to correct something that one of the people in public comment spoke about. This is not escrow withholding for the rent in its entirety. It is more than the state, but it is not in its entirety. It is two-thirds. So if you pay $1,500 a month in rent, then you are able to put 1,000 into the bank for escrow. So I just want to make certain that that is clear. This is something that we wanted to make certain, hold up, I did kind of write something down real quick. Okay, so. Alright, so, under this program, the tenants who believe that they have a valid reason to withhold rent can deposit that withheld rent into the escrow account by the city rather than risk losing it or being evicted. One of the issues that I've seen, especially right now with people in a dire straits or a tough time, is the fact that if they try to withhold their rent, something may come up where they end up pinching into their rent. We wanted to try to offer them a safe space that they can place this rent until, you know, until their landlord is able to deal with that issue. By having it go through the city, you actually have proof that you're withholding the rent and that will ensure, well, not ensure, but we, we would like to be able to give something to your landlord, showing that your rent is somewhere safe so they can get things taken care of. LNI is actually in this process as well. So we want to make certain that we have all the information that is needed in order to get, you know, to be able to put your withholding quickly into the bank and give you the timeframe, give you and the landlord the timeframe to get this all accomplished. This, this ordinance is something I worked on. This one is a little bit more detailed than the last one from last time. And so I really do hope that everyone got a chance to, because it's been a while. It's been sitting on, sitting on the side for a couple of months now. So I've talked about it previously and I, and I do apologize. I did not make all of the phone calls like I should have this time. But it's been sitting around for a while. And if anyone has any questions, please, I'm willing to answer them.
Councilmember Spadola?
Thank you, Council President. I appreciate the council members' intent here. And I think an escrow program makes sense, but not for the city, not for the state. I think a housing, housing nonprofit makes sense for them to do it. They'd probably have to charge 2% to 3% to make up for the cost as they outline here. But I think this would hurt the people it's trying to help. I, I do not see this program being run functionally by the city, cashing people's checks, and then dispersing them at a future time. That just seems, it seems like a nightmare, nightmare waiting to come to fruition. So I'm, I'm not going to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Willauer?
I would, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say to Councilwoman McCoy, I think it's great that you are making this effort. It's a clear gap in the policy that we have around renters. And you're seeking to solve a problem. So I just want to say, you know, thank you for bringing this forward. I do think that, you know, the $301,000 estimate is, you know, kind of a lot of money. Do we know how many people the, the city was thinking the program would serve? That it would cost that much money?
So from having this conversation, I'm sorry, I'm just answering, okay. So from having this conversation and the fact that we do wish to promote it, the city believes that, you know, quite a few residents will be able to take advantage of it. Me personally, the last time we had an escrow program, there is money that was sitting in the escrow account for decades that nobody came back to claim, you know? So what, to me, there, to me, there is a concern. But I don't believe that we will, I don't believe that very this first few months till March is going to take this much money. This may be if we do a full-year implementation and actually do some real promotion. For next year, it may happen, but not this year. And I have been having conversations with people downstate, especially my representative. And I've made him aware of what I was working on. And he too wants to do something for the, at the state level. So I wanted to make certain that he has everything that I've been, what I've done to see whether or not he can use that on his, on the state level. And if that relieves us from having to spend this money, that would be great. But I do have the issue that we had the ordinance, escrow ordinance on the books and that we were unable to use it because we had lacked the municipal court at one point.
Councilmember Bracy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a couple of questions. First, Councilwoman McCoy, where is the 301,000 coming from? Has the administration committed to funding this? Because I know we didn't appropriate anything in the last budget for this. So has that discussion been had? Because it'd be unfortunate if we vote on something and there's no funding, so it just doesn't launch. So that's my first question. My second question is has there, would, have, was there any consideration of, instead of the government, the city government taking people's money and holding it in a bank account, that we partner with like our local credit union? And then also provide them financial coaching, financial literacy, debt resolutions? Like something that's more of a service to them, to help them with their, you know, financial stability? And then it's also in a bank and not in the city government? So those are my two questions. Thanks.
Alright, so if I can, if I may answer. I worked with the administration and we got, we came to this amount because of the conversation I've had with all of those departments. So this was not in a vacuum. They are aware that- They are aware that this is a $300,000 price tag. But at the same time, I do not believe that this price tag is what is going to happen as of right now. This may be what we need to do in the future. When it comes to the funds actually being received from the residents, that money will not be held, of course, not in the city. They'll be able to, God bless you, they'll be able to bring the funds here. But the funds are going to be held in a bank, the bank that we normally deal with, in an escrow account. It's going to be sub-accounts, which will definitely have that person's name on the account. We will not be in the position to hold on to money forever. There is a timeframe that the, that the landlord needs to get this thing taken care of. We do not wish to put ourselves in the, in the space that we may suffer any type of lawsuit or anything by holding up anyone's, any landlord's money. So, after 60 days, those funds go back to the resident to pay the landlord. We are not going to, we're not going to make ourselves be in between the resident, and we're not going to make it a three-party type of situation. It's just we are helping the residents to the city of Wilmington in this, in this juncture.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Cabrera, followed by Councilmember Owens and Councilmember Harley.
Well, I thank Councilmember McCoy for bringing this forth. I know she's been working really hard on this. And yes, I believe something needs to be done. My only concern, and it has been mentioned, is, and I understand it's going to be in an escrow account. It's still being managed by the city. I really love the idea that Councilmember Spadola brought forth, maybe working with a nonprofit and partnering with an organization. I'm still planning to support this because I know you've been working on this for a long time, and I think it's duly needed. But I definitely would entertain looking at another way of doing this. Because also, in conversation with the administration, it does come with a price tag. And I know they've been working with you. They would prefer that, not to have to spend that money to do this. If we can partner with another organization and maybe do it for less. I, I still think it's needed, and it's, you know, we need those protections. Because too many times, our, our renters are being, taking advantage of, and landlords are not fixing the properties up. And many of those residents are afraid to come forth and say anything or do anything because they're afraid they're going to lose their only living establishment. So, those are my, my input.
Thank you, Mr. President. What I want to say, I agree with Councilwoman Cabrera that way too many residents here in the city of Wilmington face mold leaks, no heat, passing, you know, everything, right? In this, I see this as an additional tool to help the residents who are in some of our most vulnerable communities. I want to thank Councilwoman McCoy for not just working on this, this session and bringing it back, but working on it in prior sessions as well, too. And this has been something that has been discussed very heavily on the state level. And they haven't been able to get it right. They, they said, are the state going to have this, Department of State, the courts? So, again, I, I just want to bring us back to, this is about protecting the vast majority of our residents here in the city of Wilmington. We have to stand up sometime and say, hey, look, at the end of the day, no one should be living in deplorable situations. And if your landlord is not willing to fix those situations, we don't want to see you out on the street because you can't find anywhere else. This will incentivize landlords to do the right thing and go ahead and get those things fixed so that they can get paid. But this also gives the renters an opportunity that if those issues aren't resolved, they can go back to this money and use it as a down payment to go into another rental situation. Especially now in the city of Wilmington where you have to have three times the rent just for the down payment, and have to make three times what your rent is as well, too. It is, the city is becoming very unaffordable for so many people. So, again, I just want to say thank you, Councilwoman McCoy, for this. And I would like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Thank you, Councilmember Harley, then Councilmember Spadola.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So, first, I wanted to thank Councilmember McCoy for working on this. And I also want to thank Councilmember Owens because I can recall when they had the committee meeting, and all the residents came, and they were talking about one of those high rises. And you had mentioned something about the escrow, which made me reach out to Real Estate and Housing to talk to Director Weir, because I felt as though it was important, you know, that we could try to support our residents and constituents as it related to those issues that were going on. So, I just wanted to say, you know, that was something that put it on my radar. And then, of course, some time elapsed, and Councilmember McCoy and I were talking about it. And the one thing that comes to mind is this is that even though we know that there is a price tag that eventually can be associated with this, it really would have been, I think, to our advantage if we did a pilot to see how many residents were actually going to be sending in these funds before we started actually hiring additional employees. So, in other words, I'm just saying, it, it would have been nice to be, to see, you know, what really happens, you know, if, if, if our constituents really do take advantage of it. I do support it. I want to be a co-sponsor. I'm on this legislation. But those are some of the thoughts that are coming to my mind before we actually go out and hire somebody and says, hey, you know, have somebody sitting in the office. And for months, we don't have any funds coming in or anything to process. So, I'm just, just sharing my thoughts as it relates to before we start spending money. Because, of course, I'm always thinking about our money here in the city before we actually hire someone, possibly the Real Estate and Housing can just, you know, hold off to see how we can handle it or if any funds come in. And to see, you know, hey, do we, does it really support actually hiring someone? Or can we use some of the staff that we already have? That's all I have. And again, I would like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Thank you, Councilmember Spadola, followed by Councilmember Darby.
Thank you, Council President. Question for the sponsor. Can you elaborate more on what you said about the city previously had an escrow program, and they found money that was, that was still in there for years? Because that's one of my concerns, that hard-working renters are going to cut checks to this program. It's going to be mismanaged, where I think a nonprofit would do a better job, and nobody wins.
Yes, so, I will try to speak to that question. When I, the first time I actually tried to put the escrow ordinance together was last term. And as we decide, we took a look to see whether or not we had an escrow account. They realized that it was, like, I think about, it was, it was, I think, at least $1,000 in that account. And so, they tried, they did everything. They were looking up, you know, through microfiche and everything. That's how old, that's how long it's been in there. They back looking through microfiche, trying to identify whose money is this. No one came back for this tag. So, now, because we are in a better, we're in a new technology. They're able to not just put anything in a lump sum. There are sub-accounts. It will not be all money all gathered together. It will be account, even though there will be a one large account, each account will have just that person's name, and it's only their funds. So, we don't have to worry about money mingling or mixing around. Your money goes into your account. So, that's one. And that actually is a cost, and that cost will be incurred by the, by the resident to make certain that we did the sub-accounts, and we don't actually have to spend that money. I think that's $32. That cost me $32. Hold up, yeah. Okay, I'm sorry. The additional cost that cannot be precisely quantified at this time, the treasurer's office would like the bank escrow product, which charges the fee of $32 per month for each tenant escrow account created. So, hopefully, that gives you a little bit more information. And if I may, I do agree with Councilwoman Harley. I don't believe that we probably have to do all of this higher. If we just do training to identify what this is going to look like, if we really need people. But because I wanted to do my due diligence, I needed to figure out what, if we had to have these special, these people in the office, and we had to hire people, we needed to know exactly what that would look like, what that cost. And then also, with Councilwoman Oliver, you know, give me a call and let me know. Let's see whether or not we can reevaluate. And I'm like, I, I don't have an issue with that at all.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Darby?
Yes, I have been in support of this piece of legislation since it's been introduced, and you've been working on it the last term to this term. I just wanted to confirm if I was a co-sponsor or not on the legislation. But you can add me if I'm not.
Councilmember Willauer?
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to be asked to be added as a co-sponsor.
Thank you. Councilmember Bracy?
Thanks, Mr. President. One last question for Councilwoman McCoy. Do you know what the implementation timeline looks like? Again, you've, you know, we've had this issue in previous iterations of council where we pass something, and then it moves across to the administration. There's no implementation plan. So, are you going to be working with the administration to make sure this gets implemented in a timely manner?
If I may answer?
Yes, Councilmember McCoy.
Yes, so, the only thing that, that was asked of me was for Ellen I wanted to make certain that they had someone in, in position, trained to do this. And so, they needed from the time of signature, of the time of signature, at least 30 days in order to make certain that they had all of this enacted. So, and I, and I did not have an issue with that at all. So, I've, of course, I always press and tell everyone, by every time we do ordinance, we need to figure out what the process is. Because trying to, trying to do anything in, any type of enforcement, if we don't know what it should be, what should be happening, and we are, we're asking the administration to do so, it's not their priority. It was what we wanted. We needed to make certain that we should, we should have a process in place when we hand it over. I do want to state, I thank you all so much for all those who, who asked to be co-sponsors. This is still, you know, and it's going to be in its infancy. We hope to be able to promote and make certain that people are aware. Last term, you know, I actually had the votes. It was, it was overturned. I had the votes, but the state was going to try to take it, the state was going to take a whack at it. Unfortunately, that didn't happen. And so, I did not want it to lay dormant. I decided I was going to bring it back and try to put more, more effort in it to try to flesh it out so it'll be easier to digest, and also for the administration to understand what we were trying to get done. So, I do, you know, I hope, I have quite a few sponsors. It's okay that the, some are thinking about the dollars. It is a price tag, and I don't believe that we'll probably have to pay that amount now. But if this is successful, we will definitely need to be looking at that price tag for our next fiscal year.
Thank you. I would also like to be added as a co-sponsor. And before we go to vote, Councilmember Harley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think Councilmember McCoy just said what I wanted to speak to. Like, at what point will we adjust or amend the budget? Or is this coming out of Real Estate and Housing? Are they just kind of going to, you know, give this a period to see, you know, to get it together, to see what it looks like? And/or do we have to make an amendment to our, our budget?
I will have to get back to you about whether or not a budget amendment is needed. But I do know that we need at least 30 days to do any type of training.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any closing comments?
I'm not, you can call for the role.
All right, please, call for the role.
Councilwoman Owens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Willauer?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bracy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
And Councilman Spadola?
No.
And President Congo?
Yes.
Ten yeas, one nay, and two absent.
Declared adopted.
Thank you. Mr. President, I have an ordinance to present, call for the third and final reading.
Ordinance number 25-044, agenda number 0088. An ordinance to amend chapter 34 of the city code to require landlords provide written notice of tenants' rights in lease.
And, Mr. President, I have a substitute in lieu of that ordinance. What is it?
An ordinance to amend chapter 34 of the, oh, substitute one to ordinance number 25-044. An ordinance to amend chapter 34 of the city code to require landlords provide written notice to, of tenants' rights in lease.
All right, so, I actually have a floor amendment to this, to this ordinance. Okay, so, the floor amendment is, it just adds additional requirements for landlords to include on their lease provision. This was something that was brought to me by the Director of License and Inspections, other things that he would like to, to see on that lease agreement. So, the motion, I'm, I'm sorry. I want to make a, a floor amendment at this time.
Second.
Okay, so, on page, all right, on page one and two of agenda item 008. So, want to delete section 34-153, sub-paragraphs three through four in their entirety, and replace with the following language, the constitute section 34-153A, sub-paragraphs three through six. So, number three is going to be the landlord's contact information, business address, phone number, email, emergency contact, and, and phone number. They said, put phone number twice. Oh, emergency contact and phone number, okay. Number four, the property manager's contact information, if applicable. The business address, phone number, email, emergency contact, and number. Then number five, the landlord's city rental business license number and expiration date. And number six, the date of the last approved rental inspection conducted for the dwelling. All right, and renumber original section 34-153A, sub-paragraphs five through eight as section 34-153A, seven through 10. And then add the new section as follows. If there's any change in sub-paragraphs three through six above, the landlord must provide written notice to the tenant within 60 days.
All right, thank you. Before we take the vote on the amendment, are there any questions to the amendment? Councilmember Oliver?
Yes, most of that, all that information, when the inspector comes out, I've dealt with them in the past, they have all that information. So, why are we reinventing the wheel? Just sometimes, people just want to talk because they have a mouth. Because that is already, I mean, I just dealt with it. The inspector called the landlord, he had all the information. So, you know, I'm just wondering, what is different than what we already have? I mean, especially when you said, put his, his license number on me, his, put his license, put his license number on there. I mean, I just, I don't know. That's okay. I just, I won't be voting for the amendment. That sounds ridiculous. You already have all the information. Now, he wants it again just to add another layer form to whatever you're doing. I mean, just, that's not reinventing the wheel, making up stuff just because you're making up stuff. So, that sounds ridiculous to me, that, what you just said.
Should I respond?
Yeah, I think we should just try to be respectful in our, in our comments.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I didn't mean it like that. Let me take that back. I just think that was aggressive form to put on, because we, we already have that. So, I'm sorry, I didn't mean it in that form. I'm just like, why are we just repeating what we already have? I'm sorry, I didn't mean it in that form.
All right, thank you.
My fault.
I'm going to take a vote on the, do you want to respond? Or we just want to take a vote on the, on the amendment?
I did want to respond because what she said is valid. The reason why we had to, the reason why I put this information in, and it's been changed, it's been adjusted some from what you have in front of you, is because this is about the tenants' rights in their lease agreement. And you're right, most of this stuff is on here. But we want to make certain that everything is added. So, when they come to the city stating that I need to do, ask, you know, withhold rent, and I need to be part of the escrow program, they already have this stuff in hand. So, by, you know, a lot of times, the landlord, whatever it is that they are signing that lease agreement, they have a little, little brief summary about what is expected between the landlord and tenant. We just want to make certain that that information, whatever it is that that copy that they're giving them includes these things, that they'll always have these things. They'll always know how to contact their landlord, they'll always know how to contact the third-party person. They, they'll know when the last time the place been inspected, all that kind of stuff. It will be right in their hands. That's what this is about.
All right, thank you. Want to take a vote on the amendment? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah, no.
Amendment adopted. You may continue.
Okay, so, that being stated, all right, Mr. President, I move this to be enacted clause of the substitute ordinance, a call for yea and nay vote. and call for a yea or nay vote.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that this be known as the Enacting Clause of the Ordinance and call for a yea or nay vote on the question.
So this is, um, this is accompanying piece to the ordinance escrow. We just wanted to make certain that if people are coming to the city, uh, requesting help, that we make it easier for ourselves by asking that this information be given to each of these renters, each of these renters as they're signing a lease agreement. Now, this might not be something that people who've been in, um, you know, have had lease agreements for some time. They may not have that. They may have to go get that. But if this goes through, this will be, uh, this will be enacted January 1st of 2026, that we give the, um, the landlords the opportunity to put that information down so that they'll be able to make copies and distribute it to their brand-new residents.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Owens?
Yes, again, thank you for this. Can I be added as a co-sponsor?
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Darby?
I would like to be added as a co-sponsor, but I also, uh, do have a question about accountability. Um, so if I'm a landlord, I don't put it in. How are we, as a city, holding them accountable when they don't follow that? Like, those things. Um, maybe we can have a conversation later on about what that looks like. But I think that's where a lot of landlords are operating the way they are is because we don't have accountability on the city end to say, if you don't have a business license, if you don't have these things, then you can't renew your license or you can't pull a permit until these things happen. So I just think it has to be connected to that. But I think that can also be like another piece of legislation. But I am in support of it. But I don't know what you think accountability looks like if a landlord doesn't do this?
Excuse me, I actually, I, I've looked at that. To me, from this point of view, talking to, um, to Director Pabon, this is at least giving him access to find out who actually is already doing the, um, the inspections. We know that there are a lot of people who are still not getting inspections. So this has given us a heads up to find out who, how long has it been since someone's been inside that, that residence or whatever, that site, that location? We'll be able to start figuring out who's doing what and try to get the, uh, things a, a little bit more tamer when it comes to how our, what the types of residents that, you know, the types of apartments and houses that our residents are renting. This is not going to be accountability, if anything. This just, uh, gives us like a spotlight, a highlight on what's happening outside. That's basically what this is. I guess, once we get to shore things up, getting that information, then we could probably figure out how do we hold people accountable. I definitely feel like there needs to be a piece about accountability, but that's not going to be really here in this. That has to be something definitely, that has to be something else. This was more so about making certain that any of the residents who wanted to take advantage of the ordinance, the escrow ordinance, they already had this information in hand when they came to, or would they be able to, uh, access it when they came to. And if they didn't, and if they couldn't, that's when our Ellen and I could get involved. Be like, why, this is a, this is a law. Why haven't you taken care of this yet? Why does this person doesn't have this information?
Can I follow up real quick?
Yes.
So Ellen and I is going to, in the inspection, inspect the lease now. And when they inspect the lease, they're going to check to see if we put the information about the escrow in there.
Well, no, no, the inspector will not be inspecting it. This is the person who is actually, uh, retrieving the information from the renter who wants to withhold. They'll, they'll be making certain that all this information is completed.
Okay, got it. I can follow up?
Yes.
So I'm the renter. I go and put my money in escrow. The whoever's collecting that escrow goes to the landlord and says, landlord, show me your lease. Is this in your lease? And if it's not in their lease, we have no accountability factor right now.
Wait, my thing, I'm confused. I think I'm confused. No, you're coming to the city of Wilmington and you want to, uh, take advantage of escrow ordinance. You bring your information. If you don't have all of this, they'll try to make certain that they can get as much of it, of it that they can. But when Ellen and I goes to that property to do the inspection, they'll be making certain that the landlord is aware there's some things that she still have not completed. Like, you know, whatever, whatever these informations that are blank.
Oh, okay, all right.
Okay. I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments from any councilmembers? If not, any, any closing comments, Councilmember McCoy?
Uh, no, thanks again for the patience. Um, I'm not really a floor amendment person. I was, so you can just call for the vote.
All right, clerk, please call for the roll.
I just wanted to clarify, this is not a substitute. It's just the ordinance as amended, okay?
Thank you.
Um, Councilman Owens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Darby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oliver?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harley?
Yes.
Councilwoman Willauer?
Yes.
Councilman, Councilwoman McCoy?
Yes.
Councilman Field?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bracy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cabrera?
Yes.
Councilman Spadola?
Yes.
President Congo?
Yes.
Eleven yeas and two absent.
Declared adopted. Councilmember Bracy has asked to be excused. Councilmember Johnson also asked to be excused, so his legislation is being held. At this time, we will move to petitions and communications.
Council President requests to be excused.
Yes, you may be excused.
Mr. President, may I be excused?
Yes, you may be excused. Councilmember Owens?
Yes, um, I just have one announcement. Um, on November 22nd, there's going to be a senior ball at the Pal of Wilmington. Um, feel free to reach out to me if you're interested in going. That's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Darby.
I have nothing.
Thank you, Councilmember Harley.
I have nothing.
Thank you, Councilmember Willauer.
Um, thank you, Council President. I just wanted to congratulate Councilwoman Cabrera,